Good morning. And Zion for their presence here and ask Councilmember Cardenas.
Welcome again to Los Angeles City Council. Sorry, today is Friday, February 17th, 2006. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your channel. And also, we are being webcast through our city's homepage. And the address of that homepage is www.lacity.org. And there's a wealth of information that folks can find on our city's homepage. You can also click on the link to watch our council meetings through your own computer at home or work. We also are available on Council Phone, which is a phone number you can call in order to access our city's council meetings and our committee meetings and hear those live. We are meeting today in John Ferraro Council Chambers in Room 370 here, third floor of City Hall, as we do each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. And we are going to begin our Friday meeting now with a presentation as we usually do. But first, I want to thank Councilmembers Gruel, Weezer, Labange, Perry, Smith, Wesson, and Zion for being here and their presence. We are awaiting a few more members for quorum, and we will run through the agenda. But we, if we can ask folks, please, to keep their conversations down. We've just started the meetings. If we can, please, ask folks to take their seats and to wrap up their conversations out in the audience. We appreciate that very much. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Perry for our first presentation. Shh. Thank you very much. Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. President, can you guys hear me? You can't hear me? How's that? Is that better?
Marilyn, do you want to stand up with the Council General? Okay. Stand next to me. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am very honored to stand here today with Marilyn Solomon, along with the British Council General, Robert Pierce. Marilyn is one of the 20 individuals this year to receive the distinction of Officer of the British Empire. Ms. Solomon was awarded Officer of the British Empire on February 10th, 2006, and was presented by the British consulate in Washington, DC for her exceptional achievement in the area of public service and for her dedication in carrying out the tenants of the British Marshall Awards Scholarship. The award recognizes Ms. Solomon's decades-long work as chairperson of the Marshall Scholarship Regional Selection Committees in both San Francisco and Los Angeles. She became an honorary officer of the most excellent order of the British Empire on February 10th and received the insignia of the award at an investiture in the British Embassy in Washington, DC from the British Ambassador to the United States, Sir David Manning. British Council General Bob Pierce also attended the ceremony and will speak with us in a moment. Ms. Solomon is currently a member of the British Ambassador's Council for the George C. Marshall Scholarships and has a long history of dedicating her time to public service. She has served as a representative of UNICEF, president of the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women, executive committee member of Rebuild L.A., and as a board member of numerous community organizations that are committed to helping others. She is truly committed to serving our community through her ongoing work. Here in Los Angeles, we are very proud of Marilyn Solomon for earning this prestigious award, and I personally wanted to take this opportunity to honor her for this great achievement. Congratulations. And now, I would like to recognize the Council General who will say a few words.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. Thank you, Mr. President, honorable members. Thank you for honoring Marilyn Solomon in this way, and thank you for allowing me to put on record here the debt of gratitude that the British government owes to Marilyn for all that she's done for us. Her Majesty the Queen has honored Marilyn with the Order of the British Empire. It's an award that we hand out very sparingly and only to the most special people who've done the most special, made the most special contributions to our relationship with the United States. The Marshall Scholarship Program was set up 50 years ago. It's a very prestigious scholarship program, picking the very best people to go to the UK for two years, normally to do a master's degree. It was set up 50 years ago as a thank you to the United States for the Marshall Plan and in recognition of the importance of the alliance between the UK and the United States, which got us through World War II. And it recognized also that that alliance would continue to be important for generations to come and would depend upon close friendship and deep understanding between our two countries. It's an extremely important program, therefore. Its success depends upon wonderful people like Marilyn Solomon to help us promote the program, help us reach out to deserving young people. And she has done a wonderful job here in California. She established the committee in Los Angeles, and we are extremely happy with the people that have come forward and won scholarships to the United Kingdom. So Marilyn has changed the lives of many young people in Los Angeles, and she has enriched the links between Los Angeles and the United Kingdom, and we are very grateful to her, and we are very grateful to the council for recognizing that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council General. And now, a few words from our honored guest, Marilyn Solomon.
Thank you very much. The young people that I met through the 10 years or so working with the British Marshall Scholarship have changed my life, also. Having six children of my own, I thought I had been fully challenged until I met these wonderful people from around the United States who are going to make a big difference in the world and will continue to promote the good relationship between the United Kingdom and the United States. And a special thank you to Jan Perry and a thank you to Council General Bob Pierce.
I'd also like to recognize Councilwoman Gruel to say a couple of words as well.
Marilyn, it's so great to see you and also to Council General Pierce. And you said how much Marilyn had changed people's lives and had an impact. Well, I'm one of those young people, although I still feel young, but I was one of those young people where I met Marilyn when I came to City Hall. And Marilyn invited a young woman to her house many times to participate in a discussion with other incredible women who have made a difference not only in Los Angeles but across this country and across the world. And so, I just want to say this is so well-deserved, that your history, your accomplishments are really incredible. And as someone who benefited from your mentorship and leadership, I just wanted to say thank you very, very much and to say congratulations, a very well-deserved honor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We also would like to recognize Paula Petrato, who'd like to say a few words about Marilyn before we adjourn.
Thank you. On behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women, I just want to thank you for the many years of service that you gave to us and for bringing issues like domestic violence, like women and AIDS, like women of color, women in the media to the public's attention. And I have been very honored to serve as the executive director when Marilyn was president under our former mayor, Tom Bradley. And I just cannot say enough good things about what you did for the women of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much and congratulations again.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Appreciate it. And it was, I just wanted to welcome the Council Generals always and congratulate you, Marilyn. And I know Marshall Scholars were certainly among my very closest friends in the time that I spent in the UK. And you're right, they were the smartest bunch and the most qualified graduate students wherever they were in the UK. So congratulations again on this incredible honor. Thank you. I'd like to recognize next, Councilwoman Gruel. And on deck will be Councilman Wesson. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor and privilege this morning to thank someone who has really made a difference in the business community in Los Angeles and civic communities, not only in Los Angeles, but the entire region. And we're here today to honor Mark Lactor, who has been the editor of the Los Angeles Business Journal for the last nine years. And as I was reading his resume and his history, he's had quite a varied experience all across the country and here in Southern California. But he began his long and distinguished journalism career at the Newport News Daily Press in Virginia, and then moved to the Energy Daily Newsletter and State's News Service in Washington, DC. He moved then to Southern California, to Orange County Register, covering aerospace, technology, and the communications industries. He first moved into an editing position and as financial writer and editor for the Investors' Business Daily in Los Angeles, and later launched an advertising column as a business writer and columnist for the San Francisco Chronicle. He served more than nine years as an editor at the Daily News of Los Angeles, including six years as business editor and three years as associate business editor and columnist, and then as the editorial pages editor. He joined the Business Journal in 1996 as editor-in-chief and immediately upgraded the paper's coverage and focused the paper's attention on key economic and business interests facing the Los Angeles business and civic communities. He and his staff have won more than 80 awards during his nine years as editor, included repeated awards from the Association of Area Business Publications and the Best Business Journal in the nation. Under Mark's leadership, the Business Journal became a must-read paper among the region's business and civic elite and consistently broke stories that the rest of the region's media had to follow. He also took it upon himself to prepare the Los Angeles Business Journal for its transition to the Internet era and successfully launched the paper's daily web edition. Mark lives in Westwood with his wife, Laura Levine, a distinguished author of mystery fiction. He is leaving the Business Journal, his post, to pursue long-term projects in the journalism field important to the Los Angeles civic community. And I have to tell you, I didn't, I'll admit this, before I went to go work for DreamWorks, I didn't read the Business Journal. But it became the paper, and in fact, sometimes on Saturday mornings, I'd literally go to the stand and call my boss and tell him what was being said about DreamWorks in the Business Journal that morning. And it has continued as I became a city council member, the importance the Business Journal plays in issues that face not only the business community, but government and how the two can work together. And Mark has been the leader there. And I want to acknowledge now for someone to make a few remarks is Matt Toledo, who is the publisher of the Los Angeles Business Journal.
Thank you, Wendy. President Garcetti, honorable members, and especially you, Councilmember Gruel. I just want to punctuate a few of the items that were noted in your comments. Mark has truly been this driving force relative to the impact that this paper has made in the community. And we have indeed been very fortunate to receive numerous awards around the country for the journalism excellence that Mark brought, not only covering business, but really reflecting the diversity of our community and the excitement of this business community has really come through in the pages over the last nine years. And on a personal note, I couldn't have asked for a better business partner than to have my friend, Mark Lactor, be the chief leader of our news organization over this period of time. I want to join the council in recognizing Mark and thank him for his great work that has really taken an under-recognized paper to being one of the nation's leading regional business news publications. Joining me this morning is also one of our senior reporters, Mr. Howard Fein. And if, Mr. Fein, you'd like to make a few comments, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Lactor.
Thank you. Thank you, honored council members, and especially thank you to my longtime editor and mentor, Mark Lactor. It has been a pleasure to work with him over the last eight years, and it's been a pleasure to see how he has managed to turn the Business Journal into not only a must-read, but a force for ideas and a force for consideration of major civic issues in the Los Angeles area. And it's been a pleasure, and I want, on behalf of the entire news staff of the Los Angeles Business Journal, I want to express my thanks to all his years of service and the best for whatever endeavors he may embark on in the future. Thank you.
Before we hear from Mr. Lactor, we've got two other council members who'd like to be heard. Mr. Rosendahl will be followed by Mr. Zion.
We're going to miss you, Mark. I mean, I've had the pleasure of working with you when I had my journalist hat on and doing the shows over there at both Century and Adelphia. You're a terrific guy. Now, as an elected official, there's a different relationship. And I can tell you that from my experience as a journalist and now as an elected official, what you've done with the Business Journal has been fantastic. It's truly brought the community together on economic issues, on transportation issues, on social issues. It's been very meaningful, very substantive, and a great contributor to the greater Los Angeles area. And we want to thank you for your leadership with that newspaper. God bless you and best of success as you move forward in life.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've never met you in person, but under your command, that Mr. Fein has done a fine job. When it comes to covering politicians, when it comes to covering the Business Journal, when it comes to issues that involve the politics of Los Angeles, I just wanted to commend you for having a good reporter who's been at the helm, who's been consistent. And any requests I've had of him, which have been minimal, he has followed through immediately. So it wouldn't happen if there wasn't command at the top to making that work. So congratulations and to Howard, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. And I know you want to have a really good story, that's why you're, you know, being nice to Howard today.
It's fine, Zion. Fine Zion.
Yeah, fine Zion. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce and acknowledge Mark Lactor, the wonderful editor of the Los Angeles Business Journal.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gruel and members of the council. This is a great honor, really kind of thrilling. I don't know how often you get journalists in front of this body being recognized in this way. It's a real kick for me. I will tell you that the nine years just had, was a great ride at the Business Journal. The great thing about putting something like this together is it's fun, and that's, that goes a long way in terms of, in terms of jobs. So anyway, thanks very much, and thank you especially, Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gruel, and congratulations again, and nice to have you here, the three journalists here all at once. Our next presentation will be Mr. Wesson with a couple furry friends. And while he's coming up, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas to make an introduction.
Yes, while my colleague, Mr. Wesson, is getting ready for his presentation, I'd just like to welcome the women's golf team for the city of San Fernando. They're going to meet the challenge of taking their league this coming year, and these young ladies have committed that not only are they going to be good golfers, but they're going to be very well in their academics. They've met a challenge that I've given them. I told them, if I buy you books, will you read them? And they said, yes. So we're going to put them on an extracurricular reading program, not just about golf, about life. The first book that they're going to read is Esperanza Rising, about a young woman who wrote a book about working in the fields here in this great country. And I just wanted to say hello to all of you on behalf of the women's golf team of the San Fernando High School. And they're going to tour their city hall. And I asked them today, is this the first time you've been to City Hall? And they said, yes. So welcome to your city hall and your city council chambers.
Mr. Wesson.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. President, and members, and to all of the folks that are out here in the audience today. Today is the second week of our Adopt a Pet program. What we have, well, first of all, I want to introduce Ed Boakes, who's our new head of animal services. We should give him a round of applause. And Captain Karen Nipsher, who's in charge of public relations. Today, we have a beautiful, beautiful cat named Skittles. Look at her, everybody go, ah. Skittles is a white with calico markings. She's female. She's two years old. She was found in the district that I represent, and we bring Skittles before you today looking for a home. I'm waiting for the first member that's going to adopt one of these animals. But anyway, there's a phone number, people that are watching us on television, and that phone number is 888-452-7381. And if you want to adopt Skittles, make her your companion plant, please do that. Everybody, let's give Skittles a round of applause. You know what? That was so nice, I think we're going to do it twice. So wait a minute, I have another, come on, let's bring out Ruthie. Ruthie is just a darling. Look at her. She's got her little scarf on that says, "Adopt Me." I want to ask Mr. Parks to come up here, because Ruthie is from the eighth district. Yeah, you probably seen her, he said he's seen her before. Okay, Ruthie is a female, mixed rottweiler, German shepherd. She's four years old. She's already spayed. She's ready to go home today. How could you refuse this face? Mr. Parks, come on over here and get close to, unless you have an allergy or...
As close as I get.
No, this is, this is...
I don't do dogs.
Don't you, don't you just like, look at the chief, see, she's going right over. Anyway, again, this Adopt a Pet Program is something that we're going to do. We're starting out, we're going to do this twice a month. Hopefully, we'll be able to do it once a week in a short period of time. And for those of you that have never felt unconditional love, if you adopt one of these pets, they will love you when you're good, they will love you when you're bad, they will love you when you forget to feed them in the morning. So anyway, anybody interested in adopting sweet Ruthie, who works, who does very well with children and other animals, please call 888-452-7381. Mr. Parks really wants you to adopt Ruthie. Ruthie. Anyway, thank you so very much. Thank you. Anybody want a dog? Do we have a taker for Ruthie? Ruthie's ready to go today.
Thank you very much.
I kissed her last week. Come on, Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Boakes. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry again for a special presentation.
I'm here to make a special presentation to someone we all know and dearly love, our colleague and our friend, Councilman Bernard Parks. Let's give him a big hand. It's a surprise. Just relax, just relax. Stand up here.
I don't, I don't want a dog.
I know, I'm not going to make you take that dog no matter what. As many of you may know, our friend, Councilman Parks, was recently inducted into the International Civil Rights Walk of Fame and was honored at the 14th Annual Trumpet Awards in January. In its 14th year, the Trumpet Awards honors African-Americans who have demonstrated leadership and professionalism in all areas of society. And although some honorees such as Stevie Wonder and Usher come from the entertainment industry, the awards also focus on influential members of law, business, and political communities. And now, they have honored one of our own, Los Angeles City Councilman Bernard C. Parks. Founded by CNN journalist Zernona Clayton and funded by CNN's Ted Turner, the Trumpet Awards' goal is to foster understanding and to honor those African-Americans who have contributed to society in areas other than sports and entertainment. And at the same time, Mr. Parks received another great honor. He was inducted into the International Civil Rights Walk of Fame. The Walk of Fame has honored civil rights pioneers with granite and bronze footprints. The prints are created by using shoes that have been contributed by the inductees. The footprints are currently on display outside of the Martin Luther King Jr. National Historic Site. Inside the National Historic Site, there is a permanent display of biographies and photos of all inductees. On January 23rd, 2006, Mr. Parks, along with Archbishop Desmond Tutu, Stevie Wonder, former United States President Bill Clinton, and Lena Horne, were inducted into the International Civil Rights Hall of Fame. Mr. Parks is the second elected official from the state of California to be selected to this group of international leaders. So I thought it was only appropriate that we honor our colleague for this impressive achievement and to say publicly, we are all very proud of you.
Before we hear from, before we hear from this civil rights hero and dog lover, we want to hear from a couple of the council members, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for planning this presentation because, a couple of reasons. Mr. Parks hasn't bragged about this at all. I was going to say, not nearly enough, but at all. I didn't catch wind of this tremendous honor until, I think he was already in the air on the way to Atlanta. I heard a brief report on the radio several weeks ago and called him, got his voicemail, because this is a tremendous honor. Ms. Perry did a good job of describing really the magnitude of this recognition. And the other reason I wanted to stand up and say something is because unfortunately, in our day-to-day lives, in our day-to-day business, we see Councilman Parks as a colleague. He's a friend, he's Bernard. And we sometimes lose sight of the real achievements that he, as a colleague, has really accomplished in his personal life, but the model, the example that it sets for so many others, particularly young people these days. We have really a living legend amongst us, and it's an honor to call him a friend and a colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, and the audience here. This is the richest man in town. His family, wonderful family, I know they were down here at the last time you were honored, Bernard, which is so special, your mother and your grandmother and your beautiful wife and family. I mean, I don't know how many people have all that family still with them to see the success that you have and to be named. It's such a very important honor to look at what you have done in this city from when you started as a Los Angeles police officer, going to then St. John Vianney High School at Third and La Brea. I know one of my brothers went to school with you, and I was familiar with Bernard Parks back then as a young, young, young youngster in their football team. I just want to congratulate you, because you also have had several hills to climb, but also had to climb back several hills. I know, once you stood there one day, when I first got here, it had a very, very tough speech that you made. And, but yet, you kept going and kept improving, and now to be named to a Walk of, a Hall of Fame, which is so important, you don't want to be on a Walk of Fame, you don't want to be on Hollywood Boulevard, because they'd walk on your star, I know that, you're too cool, Bernard. But no, that you made this accomplishment is truly a credit to your perseverance and to your parents, who really helped drive you and your personal perseverance. So I'm proud of you, although we don't agree all the time on things or philosophical things, we all want what's good for Los Angeles, and you want what's good for all people. And I'm just proud that you recognized for this special honor. Give Bernard Parks a big hand, thank you.
All right, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and congratulate my colleague. When I first met him, he was the chief. And now that he's the councilman, I want to thank you for your humor, for being who you are, when you carry such great responsibilities as Chair, Budget, and Finance, and given all the scars you must carry from all those different challenges that has been spoken to, it's a pleasure to work with you. So congratulations, well-deserved, and let's keep working together.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. What an honor to be here.
What an honor to be here for me, when you're getting this award. You are the most senior member of this group. I'm a couple of days behind you within that context. But to have watched you as the chief of police and handling the issues that you handle for all of us was magnificent. You came in at a tough time in the city, and you got engaged in every issue. I now, as life turns, was standing there, and you gave me a cert when I was ending my cable career and my broadcast career. And so, now, I'm your colleague. While I sit on the Budget Committee with you, and the thoroughness and the homework that you do and the way you explain things and outline things have really made my first eight months on this council very meaningful. You've been a brother and a colleague, and congratulations for being inducted into this.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson and Mr. Smith. Mr. Wesson.
First of all, Jan, I think this was an excellent, excellent idea. And to you, Chief, it's difficult for me to call you councilman, because when I met you back in '87, you were a chief. As far as I'm concerned, you will always be. But what I wanna say is that you have been, over the years that I've known you, one of the classiest individuals that I have ever met in my life. I have never been embarrassed by anything that you've done or that you've said. Whenever I've seen you in public, you've always made me proud, and I'm sure that other people feel that way. It's a pleasure to serve with you. And what I will say to folks outside of this horseshoe, that Bernard Parks is hilarious. So if you ever have an... I mean, he may stand up straight, but if you ever have some personal time with him, you will find it truly enjoyable. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to stand in support of all the things that have been said about Bernard Parks. I had the pleasure of serving under you in uniform, as you were my chief, as a reserve officer. And you always comported yourself with great dignity in that job. And I think, and I've said this many times, I think you've reached the pinnacle of your success as a leader, right here in this council. I think you've shown yourself to be a great leader, and what you've done in the Budget and Finance Committee has been extraordinary. The policies we brought forth in the last year, the tough-love fiscal policies that you've brought forward, and I'm just pleased, as always, to call you a friend, which I've done for a long time, going back to the days with your dad, when we used to go fishing. But I just wanna let you know, I just had a phone call from Barbie Parks. She said, "You're still slouching too much. Stand up." There you go. And to get the cement off your fingernails. So I just wanna bring that to you. Anyway, it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's been my honor to sit on your committee and watch your leadership. And congratulations, it's a great honor for you. One of many you've received over your life, including this, was the sexiest man in America?
One of the most beautiful.
Beautiful man in America. Beautiful man in America. Congratulations, Bernard. You're well deserved. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Zion, and Ms. Gruel. Mr. Weezer.
I wanted to congratulate the chief on this recognition. I think it's a very, very well recognition for you. And when I think of Bernard, I think statesman. I think someone who's very thoughtful, and most importantly, really takes his role as a public servant very seriously. And I look forward to working with you on the Budget Committee. I wanted to mention that, I probably shouldn't be saying this publicly, my wife, who works here at the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families, before I even got on the school board, we were at the East LA Parade, and you were there in your uniform, and she kept glancing at you. And I looked over at her, and I said, "Rochelle, do you have a crush on the chief?" And she didn't answer me. So, but anyway, this is... She's someone, and you've been working with her on going out to the communities, to get out to the community, the important work that the city is doing, and getting out to the community, the role and how we could better serve our communities. She's been working with you on that, too. And she comes home at times, tell me how much she respects what you're doing, because she knows that you really are here as a public servant in the best interest of the public. So thank you for the work you do in the city, and this is a recognition well deserved. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you. Well, we both came from that same blue suit. Way back when. And it's public safety that brings us together, and the city council that brings us together. And the spirit that you have for the people of Los Angeles, the leadership that you display for the people of Los Angeles, it's the attitude that you display for the people of Los Angeles. That's what brings it out. And we've served on public safety now, since you've been in council. I haven't served on Budget and Finance, but all of our dealings, all of our resolutions, all of the issues, we've been on the same plate for the people of Los Angeles. So I, too, want to offer my congratulations. I know it started out there, directing traffic as a young police officer, rose through the ranks to receive the highest ranking within the Police Department, and here as an elected official, and to be recognized and to have that prestige bestowed upon you is well worthy, because you've earned it, because you've worked hard for it, and you continue to work hard for it every day. So congratulations to you. And as Tom Labons just said, the family that surrounds you, a lot of love, a lot of care, a lot of support. And here, in your council chambers, you have that same type of support. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Ms. Gruel is our last speaker.
Thank you. And I will be brief, because Mr. Parks' head's gonna get this big, and none of us were able to fit into the same room. But I just wanted to add my congratulations. I have known Bernard for a very long time as chief. I don't know if you remember that we first met when you were captain of Central Division. And I won't tell about your glasses you had at the time. But they were quite stylish then. But he was trying to deal with issues of homelessness and the kind of the poverty issues when I was working with the mayor. And for so long, Bernard has been a leader on a variety of issues, not only in public safety, but now as Chair of the Budget Committee and have the distinct honor and pleasure to serve with him on the Budget Committee. But you are that kind of beacon of hope, that role model for young people all across this country about what can accomplish. And I think Mr. Smith said it best. I mean, he has been, this is like the pinnacle, his career and what he's been able to do as a council member has been extraordinary. And so, I just am glad to have you as a colleague and call you a friend, and glad that Jan acknowledged you for your efforts and being acknowledged nationally for your civil rights efforts. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. And Mr. Parks.
First of all, let me say thank you. One thing, I have to get back to my staff, that they're supposed to make sure I'm never surprised. Well, today, I'm surprised. And Jan Perry, thank you very much. This honor is significant to me, more so the fact that I got a chance to meet Bishop Tutu in person, sit next to him. And then, to have been at this award ceremony the last couple of years, to have met Maynard Jackson before he passed away, and a variety of people that this function brings together is extraordinary. Today is special to me, and we'll introduce them later, but my 4th and 7th grade teacher are here. And it's great for me, for you to be saying these things, because I was generally, through the first seven years of grade school, voted least likely to succeed. But that's a joke. That's a joke.
Don't let us down.
But no, they are here today, and we're gonna honor them, because they have had significant achievements in their life. But just let me say, thank you very much. This is something that will be certainly heartfelt for the rest of my life, to know that all of you have honored me with this. And also, to Zernona Clayton, who's also made this happen in the city of Atlanta. And for my wife, I'm gonna pull my stomach in and walk back to my seat.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and congratulations again. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Hahn for the next presentations. For folks that are here, I know we have a specially packed chambers. I wanted to recognize, as they leave as well right now, the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders from All Souls Catholic School in Alhambra, escorted by Javier Gutierrez. Please give them a round of applause, and we wanna thank them for being here today. Welcome to City Council. We will also be getting to public comment in a little bit, and we recognize their large... Yeah, Mr. Labons, do you wanna say something on the school?
Another school here, from Hancock University. Please welcome, give them a big hand here. A foreign student studying with Mr. Parks. Welcome from Hancock University. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome as well to our City Council chambers. And thank you, Ms. Hahn. Why don't you continue? I just wanna let folks know, we will begin public comment as soon as we finish our presentations. We have about four or five more presentations. We do understand there's about 400 people out in the overflow, including a large contingent of folks from the South Central Farmers and some other people that are here. And we are setting up the chambers in the Public Works Room to accommodate people who aren't able to be in here, but would like to sit down and still hear the proceedings as we continue with the Friday presentations. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this is a great day to honor Bruce Seton, who just recently retired after 35 years of service with the city of Los Angeles, most of it being with our Los Angeles Harbor Department. And one of the best things about Bruce, which I think was reflected in the way he carried out his duties, particularly for the Port of Los Angeles, is the fact that he is a local guy, and he was born in Wilmington. And I think that really reflected in his, the way he related to the community. Bruce originally started his career in 1970 with our Department of Water and Power, and then started working for the port a few years later. And while at the port, he served as chief harbor engineer, director of construction management, and briefly as a director of engineering development. In 1999, he was appointed chief operating officer, and in 2004, he was appointed to serve as interim executive director. During his career, the port grew at unprecedented levels and maintained a double-A bond rating. He also committed to homeland security, environmental stewardship, and community outreach. In fact, one of the things that always endeared Bruce to me was the fact that he could always be seen at community meetings, which was sort of unprecedented for an executive director, many evenings. And I will say that San Pedro and Wilmington probably have more community meetings than anywhere else, particularly about issues relating to port development. And Bruce could be seen at many of those meetings, and I think that made a big difference in how he related to the community and how they related to him. His work at the port included overseeing all of the various contracted firms and managing $1 billion in projects. Bruce really was the guy that got things built at the Port of Los Angeles. And here's an interesting fact. In the past 25 years, Bruce never took a sick day. So, really, an unblemished sick day record in the last 25 years. A gold star for you, Bruce. He also volunteers as an instructor at the Port of Los Angeles International Trade Academy at Banning High School. And, you know, personally, Bruce has really worked closely with me in my office since I became elected in 2001, and really helped with a lot of projects that were important to me, one of which was helping to build a dog park on port property, which had been a source of consternation for all the dog lovers in the San Pedro area. Never had an off-leash dog park, and he really helped to make that happen. I'll tell you, there were many times when our project for lighting the Vincent Thomas Bridge ran short of funding. And every time I went to Bruce and asked him to help make up that shortfall, he never hesitated. Now, we have a beautifully lit Vincent Thomas Bridge, then in no short means was a credit to Bruce's leadership. Also, the waterfront promenade, both in Wilmington and San Pedro, Bruce has always loved that project, has always believed that it was right to give back access to the water to Wilmington and San Pedro, and has really worked to implement the first few phases of that in a great manner. So really appreciate that. Thank you, Bruce, for your service to the city of Los Angeles. I really do wish you the best and hope that your retirement years are rich and full, and you get to spend more time with your lovely wife. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we have a full resolution, really congratulating you and listing your highlights, and it's signed by every single member of the city council. And I really wanna thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And let me congratulate you as well, Mr. Seton, and thank you for your extraordinary work on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and on behalf of the port and the residents around it.
President, I want to speak.
And I believe Mr. Labons would like to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hahn, thank you. I think it was wonderful following another longtime city employee, Bernard Parks. Here's another who was from Los Angeles. Here's another one, Bruce Seton from Los Angeles, from Wilmington, went to work for the Republican Water and Power, went to the Port of Los Angeles, and really knew the port, really knew shipping. And I think he did a great essay in that resolution, Janice, reciting many of the things that Bruce did. Bruce helped build this city, and I just wanted to stand and congratulate you on the efforts of this and all the people that you've helped in the past. I'm very proud of you. I'm very proud of what you've done and working with Janice Hahn to try to improve the Port of Los Angeles, now being carried on by others, but started with you, the push by Janice and others to make a difference in the Port of Los Angeles. It is absolutely amazing what has transpired there. So thank you, Bruce, for all you do, and I'm very proud. Banning High, right?
Banning High.
Banning High. Okay, good job. Congratulations, Bruce.
What's their mascot?
Pirates. Pirates. I just wanna say thank you very much. It's an honor to be here and receive this. It's great to be in front of the council and get something from the council, instead of being asking for something from the council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seton.
I'll miss you.
And Ms. Hahn has a second presentation as well.
Yes, Noel Cunningham. We have another, really, legend in Los Angeles retiring. Noel Cunningham is retiring as the Director of Operations and Emergency Management for the Port of Los Angeles. He has managed the port police, the port pilots, emergency preparedness, homeland security divisions, and Noel has worked for the city for the past 40 years. I don't know about your sick leave record, but...
I'm no Bruce.
Yeah, I know, really. Noel previously served as Director of Operations and Chief of the Los Angeles Port Police, a position that he's held for 13 years. And I think he goes way back to the city of Los Angeles. He had a relationship with my father. But I think my relationship with Noel really centered around the port police, which is an organization that you should all know by now, is very dear to my heart. But more than that, it's an organization that I really believe is on the front line of, really, our first responders at the Port of Los Angeles, and really, as the, in my opinion, one of the most vulnerable entryways into this country is still through the Port of Los Angeles. He's, after 9/11, things really changed for us, and Noel really led task force and delegations, particularly in partnership with the Port of Los Angeles, in trying to find out how we might be more secure, how we might do these things without guarantee of federal funding, really putting together a security plan that, in my mind, really outshines any other organization, any other ports early in this country. Noel was one of those who helped organize the Sea Marshal Program, which was a joint effort between the Port of Los Angeles and the Coast Guard, that actually boards every vessel coming in to the Port of Los Angeles and makes sure that the manifest that is there is really what's onboard that ship. A great program, helping to secure cruise passengers and high-risk cargo. He also developed the first U.S. cruise ship passenger security plan, which has since been adopted as a national model. Noel is considered one of the nation's foremost experts in seaport security, and has presented testimony at congressional hearings and numerous federal and state legislative committees. He's a member and leader of a number of different security and safety committees and organizations. Before joining the port, Noel worked for our Los Angeles Police Department as an area captain, where he completed 25 years of service. He is the only twice-honored recipient of the Professional Image Award, LAPD's highest management award. And Noel also, besides his professional duties, does a lot to give back to the communities that he serves. He's a member of the Board of the Wilmington Boys and Girls Club. He lives in Glendora with his wife, Gerda, who I'm guessing is very happy that you're retiring and can spend more time with you. Noel, thank you so much for your service. You really are a man of integrity, of dedication, of passion, and I always felt safe and secure knowing that you were really paying attention to the security issues in and around the harbor of Los Angeles. We will miss you greatly. And here, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, is a resolution commemorating your years of service, congratulating you, and really hoping that your years of retirement will be rich.
Ms. Hahn, before he has an opportunity to speak, we do have some council members that would like to speak. Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Zion, followed by Mr. Labons. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Noel, just wanna say, congratulations. This is your second retirement. Major career in the Los Angeles Police Department. Many people do not realize that people like Noel are the people that broke down a number of barriers.
of barriers in the LAPD, having gone to the rank of captain, worked Southwest Division. And you should be aware that we're working diligently to name Southwest in honor of Homer Broome, who was the first Black person to ever command a station within the L.A. city. But Noel has a tremendous record of standing firm. I remember those battles with deputy chiefs about how to police your area and what you would not tolerate as it relates to resources being brought in without your knowledge and how you would not tolerate communities not being treated fairly. And Noel clearly stood his ground and made sure that the number-one issue in his command was the community. And I just want to say thank you. Even your second retirement, hopefully this is for real. Don't be silly and keep getting jobs, but appreciate what you've done, and clearly, you've been a major part of LAPD history, not just Black history, history of how you treated the community and how you made sure people were accountable when they worked for you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Noel, I can honestly say I know you better than a lot of other folks and your lovely wife. You were the man who brought basketball star into law enforcement. Shaquille O'Neal became a member of the Port Police Reserve Corps, and I was invited to the parties, the receptions, because of the relationship I have with you. Got to spend some time with him and how you have helped him in his career, as you've helped many, many personnel. I think Captain Tracy's around somewhere. I saw him. Where is he hiding? Why don't you get over there, Captain Tracy? When it came to the Charter Commission, and Janice Han and I were on that Charter Commission, and there was concern about the port and the safety of the port, this is before September 11th, and what some plans were to do with the port police, you were a staunch supporter of maintaining the integrity of that department, maintaining the integrity, and Janice and I fought diligently on that with you. And then when it came to benefits for your personnel, for your officers, you were there at the forefront. So, the members of the port police that are standing behind you, I'm sure they don't know all the internal workings that took place, and all the meetings that took place, and all the discussions that took place, and how many times you made calls on behalf of the personnel you represented at the port. And Captain Tracy, who was, I would say, more than a pest, more than a nuisance, totally persistent, and to say, "We really need to do this for the members of the department. This is what the chief wants." And that came to light, that came a reality because of your persistence for the members of the port police. I had the occasion with my son, who's a police officer, to take a Super Bowl cruise out of the port a couple of years ago, and the respect that we received from the port police was absolutely phenomenal. The courtesy they showed us, how they expedite us on the ship, off the ship, how they actually take that ship out past the breakwaters, and how they jump from the ship onto that little bitty boat that they've got to make sure it's secure. And when they return to port, how they provide that security. What you have led down there creates this port of security, your leadership with the LAPD and with the port, and then following that, commanding the operations down there at the port. I know you're going to go into the private world now with your lovely wife. You've got a gray beard, and that tells me that you're getting close to that retirement age. You still have that energy, that enthusiasm, the friendship that we have. I want to continue with you and your wife. And I know that the port folks, the people in San Pedro, are going to miss you because you've been a pillar of strength and support for that particular area. So, God bless you and your family in the future. You can always call me. I'm always here for you. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Madam President, Ms. Han. Noel, congratulations, and I follow with Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine. You did have a great city career. And I remember about 15 years ago, I called you and your commander, Northeast Division. And ladies and gentlemen, I think it was this weekend, about 15 years ago, it was a long weekend, because there was a car in the Los Angeles River underneath the Los Angeles, Las Feliz Boulevard Bridge, and I called Noel, and I told him about that car, and he sent people out there to investigate that car and see what was wrong if it was stolen. I came back that Monday, and it was a holiday, and it was gone, and I felt so good, I couldn't wait till Tuesday to call Noel. And I talked to Noel on the telephone. I told him how proud I was, how he took such great action to get that car out of Los Angeles River. Little I know, a long three-day weekend, then it rained in the City of Los Angeles that weekend, because I went out of town. And Noel, being the honest man he is, the great Los Angeles police officer, said, "Tom, it's now Maywood's problem. It got floated down the river." We're just kidding. We did pull that car out, but you're truly an inspiration, and I'm glad what was said about you by Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine, and also that you fought for the port police, because it's very important to have agencies that are focused on a very creek. And just look at the time that you went there, Noel, and to what has changed the dynamic. I'm very proud of you. I'm proud of the people behind you right now, because they're all standing tall, and that's the side of a good leader, when he passes the baton to people who could stand tall and carry you further. Ms. Han, thank you for bringing this distinguished individual in to get recognized by the city council, some who's protected the Port of Los Angeles. Congratulations, and many, many happy regards in your future endeavors. Thank you, Noel Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Han, any words of wisdom from your honoree?
You may speak.
I had some things I wanted to say, and I'm so honored that I'm tongue-tied now. It has, 40 years ago, when I began as a police officer, Sam Muerte was mayor, and we had Dragnet. This was a program that attracted me to the police department. Then did Johnson was president. And I think price of gasoline was about 35 or 40 cents a gallon, and most of the freeways were not completed. I think Santa Monica Freeway had just opened, had not been completed yet. So, it's been a very long journey. I've had an opportunity to see the world as an ambassador for the city and an ambassador for the port. And in 1965, when I joined the police department, it was, as Honorable Parks mentioned, it was a, most part, it was a segregated department, and it was a, there were only about 50 African-Americans in the department, and there were hardly any Hispanics or any Asians at all, because there was a height requirement, which was an artificial barrier. And those are the types of experiences that I can remember on the journey. And now, as I stand here before you, I speak, and I have been around the world and seen the great cities of the world, and there is no finer city and no greater city than Los Angeles. It is really the Mecca of this time in our history. And what makes it so unique is that its diversity and its strength. It gives it power and it gives it strength that does not exist anywhere in the world. I am so pleased, and I will close by saying that I want to personally thank Janice Han for her support and her leadership in giving these officers and their families, leading this council to vote on a pension program for these men and women and their families, including Dennis Zine and Congress Councilman Padilla, Honorable Parks, and cannot forget Bill Fujioka, who stood tall for the port police during those days, as the port police has evolved into a full-service police department, but also has involved in full-service benefits that the city has offered it. And I thank you, Janice, and I thank all of you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you again, Janice, for your support. And the great Kenny Han, who was my first constituent at Southwest, then it was university, taught me to hold myself accountable and hold the community, be accountable to the people. And Janice has also instilled that in me, and I really appreciate your leadership, Janice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Our next presentation will be by Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And it gives me great honor to be able to acknowledge behind me the bravery and the valor of a number of veterans who fought in the United States Army for our freedom and our independence here in the United States in World War II. We owe you our thanks, and we owe you our lives and our freedom here. My own grandfather fought in World War II. At the time, he was a Mexican immigrant, was not yet a citizen of the United States, but he fought in the Philippines during World War II, and through his service became a United States citizen, which certainly launched the story of my own family here in Los Angeles. And we're here today to raise awareness about the Veterans Equity Bill currently being discussed in Congress, H.R. 4574 and Senate Bill 146, the Filipino Veterans Equity Act. Many of the veterans we see here live here in Los Angeles. These are men who fought for our country and their country, were made members of the United States Army, and were promised the full benefits of being veterans, and yet, decades on, we have yet to realize our obligation that was made by President Truman. Many of the men here have friends who have declining health, they're aging, they continue to support each other through social and health programs that groups like FASG and People's Corps administers in historic Filipino town and throughout this region. I urge your groups to continue to use our office in the City of Los Angeles here. We have so many friends as a resource for your needs. And we are working too to recognize the work of the Filipino veterans by erecting the first monument that will commemorate the Filipino veterans here in Los Angeles at Lake Street Park, which we already have an artist for, and I know many of you have been at the meetings for, to make possible, at Lake Street Park. And my deputy, Joseph Bernardo, has been working very hard on that. But also, this will not only commemorate the World War II veterans, but all Filipino-Americans who continue to fight for what they believe in. So, I urge my colleagues, as this comes forward, to join me in supporting these bills. The President of the United States of America has spoken on the need to recognize these men's service, and the Congress, together with the President, can do just that. It is not a big amount of money, but it is very inexpensive when you consider that they gave us something which is incalculable, our own freedom. So, I'd like to recognize all of them with a round of applause, and also introduce Arturo Garcia, who is a community organizer of People's Corps and a longtime resident of Los Angeles, to say a few words. I believe before that, Mr. Rosendahl may wish to say something as well, a fellow veteran. But please give these men a round of applause for the freedom that they have given us.
Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to say something?
Madam President, Greg Smith and I stand here as two veterans around this horseshoe to acknowledge our brothers and sisters from the Philippines. I'm a member of Post 283 up in the Pacific Palisades, and I must say that in my visits to the Philippines, and I've been there, and I've done a lot of television shows, including with your president, that I had interviewed, that it's a shame that the recognition of your commitment to America needs to be done now, should have been done then, but better late than ever. Your leaderships within the fighting forces has been truly appreciated by everybody. And we know that in Despereaux, the Philippines, have many citizens here in Southern California who are active in all kinds of things. So, we want to congratulate you for fighting strong for America, and we salute you as veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Huizar.
Council President, I wanted to thank you for bringing this to our attention. I know we're voting on a motion by Mr. President Garcetti later on to support legislation at the federal government that will recognize the work and the sacrifices that these veterans have made. And I think it's just appalling that our federal legislators have not recognized the work, your lives that you put at stake, and we want to make sure that you not only get the recognition, but the full benefits that come with being U.S. veterans. So, I'm here to say, this is something that has been long overdue, to make something that has happened in the past right and to continue to fight for justice. This is truly something that is going to be something that we fight for justice. I thank you for being here, gentlemen, and you, I salute you, and we are with you on this fight for justice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar, Mr. Smith. Who's the next speaker?
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I wanted to say, if anyone has ever studied the history of World War II, you know that the fiercest fighters in the Pacific theater were the Filipino-Americans, who were fighting for their country and for our country. And I am proud to say we have crossed our hands across the Pacific of the Philippines, as we have always done as Americans, and stand with you today as you fight for the rights you deserve as freedom fighters, as American fighters, and as people who are trying to bring some sanity to the world in its darkest moment. So, God bless you for standing up for us, Americans. Thank you for standing up for the Philippines, and I'm so proud to serve in the United States military, as my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, was, and like him, I salute you. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Garcetti very much. Habagaba, habagahumaga, hopun salama. We got to get this.
Magandang umaga sa inyong lahat. Good morning, at maraming salamat. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We represent not only the 4,000 Filipino-American veterans in Los Angeles, but also the 11,000 Filipino-American veterans who are in the United States, who have not been recognized and still remains unrecognized for the last 60 years. Today is important because today is the anniversary of the Resolution Act that removed all the benefits from the Filipinos. I have a very short time, but I want to acknowledge Eric Garcetti, our dearest council member who sponsored this resolution, and also the district member from District 14, Jose Husar, who has a large Filipino constituency. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce the veterans, because I want to make most of the time. They are Greg Binlanueva of the Veterans Federation of the Philippines, Yusebio Wella of the Veterans Federation, Arcadio Basat of the Society of Guerrillas and Scouts, Jose Samonte of the Veterans Federation of the Philippines and from Long Beach, Max Florentino of the Disabled American Veterans, Pipin Bakli, the coordinator of the Justice for Filipino-American Veterans, Frankor Sebar, the vice president for membership of the American Coalition of Filipino Veterans, and Chris Abad of the United Filipino-American Veterans. I would like also to acknowledge our community supporters, Christine Arakelo of People's Corps, Kim Bagliari of the KMB Pro People Youth, Corey Jong of the Pro People Youth, and the mayor of the Philippine Town Incorporated, Bender Santos. And also Frank Romero of the South Central Farmers, who are also supporting our cause. And Eugene Mondo of the United Filipino-American Veterans. These people are our living heroes. Maybe five to 10 years from now, you will not see them, but may this be our historical testimony for them. Four thousand of them live in historic Filipino town, and we hope, like the city of San Francisco, who built a Veterans Equity Center for them someday, that the city of Los Angeles will also build a Veterans Center for them, not only a memorial for their services. And again, maraming maraming salamat po. Mabuhay ang mga veterano. Mabuhay.
And thank you very much, Madam President. With that, I'd like to give this to People's Corps and this to our Filipino-American veterans to give them one more last round of applause as our thanks, and let's take action for their dignity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be by Councilman Huizar from the 14th Council District.
I'm here to present to the city council and to welcome some international visitors that we have with us today from Germany. I'd want to call up a former council member who actually brought these German visitors to our attention today, former council member Art Snyder, who I would ask to come up with me and to help make this presentation. me and to help make this presentation. Councilmember Art Snyder was a council member between 1967 and 1985 for the 14th Council District, and as many of you know, it's the same district I was elected from, and when I was campaigning just two months ago, a lot of people, when I knocked on doors, would say, "We need someone like Art Snyder, someone who really looks out for constituents." So thank you, Mr. Snyder, for your hard work, for your commitment and your service to the city, and thank you for bringing the delegation today. If I could ask our visitors from Germany to stand up, to be recognized, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles. They're here exchanging our cultural views from both countries, and also looking for ways for the both countries to continue to invest in one another. We have with us today Paul William Eusterbrock, the leader of the delegation, who will share a few words with us. Mr. Did I say that correctly? Eusterbrock, welcome.
Thank you very much for receiving us here today. Los Angeles has been always a very hospital and welcoming city, in particular for people from Germany, and we are very gracious that we got received here today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes. I just want to say, "Vigets, main muten, maina fata from Deutschland, goodbye, and welcome to our City Council chambers." My parents immigrated from that great country, they met each other in New York, they moved to New Jersey and raised eight children, and so I have cousins and uncles and aunts in Deutschland, and welcome to our council chambers. And to Mr. Art Snyder, in fact, Art, if we don't do what you did, which is good constituent services, we gotta be the plumber, we gotta fix the streets, we don't deserve to be sitting around the horseshoe, and your leadership over the years is well appreciated by all of us here. And avita zen to my German friends.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. I have certificates welcoming the delegation, and I will present one to Mr. Eusterbrock on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, and thank you so much for continuing to share our cross-cultural experiences and ways that we could help each other in our business economy. So thank you so much, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Dankeschön.
Mr. Rosenthal, why don't you come up here and take a picture with us too?
Very good. Vigets. Dankeschön. And you know?
Ah, sehr gut, sehr gut. (Laughter).
You can speak English? Yeah, very good, yeah. Thanks for inviting me. Dankeschön, yeah. We have my bookmate, who brought a book for you, in case you'd like to see a video of Germany for you to explore.
Great, thank you very much. We just shared that we got this book from Germany for all the council members, whenever you want to go enjoy the beauty of Germany, and we look forward to doing that. I asked Mr. Tom Labonge, who is our sister city in Germany? He pointed out to me that's Berlin, and he not only pointed that out to me, but he brought me out a whole book that documents this, so our historian in City Council reminded me of that, so thank you, Mr. Labonge, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huizar. Our next presentation is Councilmember Parks. Is it? Okay. Does Mr. All right. You want to work that out? Okay, we have two sisters here. All right, yes, you must defer to the sisters. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. You made the right decision. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask two people to come up with me, they probably have had more of an impact on my life than anyone outside of my family, and that's Sister Charlene and Sister Rose Delores. Come on up here. Now, I'm going to speak fast, because they only give us a few minutes. First of all, to give you an idea, these two individuals are members of the Sisters of St. Joseph's of Coronet. That order was founded in France in 1650, came to the United States in 1836. It's now serving in four provinces in the United States, advice provinces in Japan, Hawaii, and Peru, and also serves in Chile and Nicaragua. The Sisters of St. Joseph's, Los Angeles Province, includes most of the western part of the United States. Today, we're honoring two individuals that taught me, one in the fourth grade, one in the fifth grade, and one in the seventh grade, Sister Rose Delores and Sister Charlene, and they were both at St. Patrick's on 33rd and Central in the city of L.A. On March 19th, 2006, which is Feast Day of St. Joseph's, marks Sister Rose Delores's 57th anniversary as a nun, and Sister Charlene's 67th anniversary as a nun. And I wanted to bring them to here today to honor them for those achievements, and to tell them that I never held anything against them, even though they were mean to me through the seven years of school. Sister Rose Delores and Sister Charlene. Sister Charlene was my principal at St. John, at St. Patrick's.
This is my first visit here, and I want to just tell you that I'm very much impressed. My first visit to City Hall, in fact, even though I'm part of L.A. Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Bernard Parks for this privilege that he has given to me, to be honored at City Hall during a City Council meeting for having taught him in the fifth grade and also in the sixth grade during my third and fourth year of teaching when I was 23 years old. We never realize how we influence each other's lives unless someone very thoughtful, like Councilman Bernard Parks, who has taken the time to tell me this and to say thank you. I will never forget Councilmember Parks' beautiful smile when I taught him in the fifth and sixth grade, 10 and 11 years old. He always brought happiness to everyone around him in school, and he still has that same smile. Councilman Parks, I want to say that I am very, very proud of you. Continue your excellent work in helping others. Thank you.
We're going to go in the back and take some photos.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Sister. Before you get away, I want to apologize again publicly for trying to jump in front of you.
I think you're a little too nervous.
Tom, you're not getting to heaven. You've made a major violation here.
I hope I get to heaven, Bernard.
You might get to purgatory, but not heaven.
God bless all women who serve in whatever capacity, especially the nuns of the world, who tirelessly work to help people, and I'm so nice that you said those things about Bernard, and it is the fact, our teachers make a difference. Thank you so much, Sisters.
Mr. Labonge, while Mr. Labonge is walking up, Mr. Smith has a quick introduction. Mr. Labonge, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to introduce, first of all, Maggie Whaley, the head of our Personnel Department, has today four students from the University of Southern California Master's Degree Program in Public Administration and Public Policy, where Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry and I all graduated. So welcome, USC, fight on.
Madam President, good morning again for a very special presentation. Please welcome the Los Angeles City Pan Pacific All-Star Citywide Champions in football, flag football. You know, at our park system throughout Los Angeles, there are many, many programs, and they make them special when they have parents who are involved, who are coaches, who are leaders, directors who are leaders, and with us this morning is this Pan Pacific All-Stars, which were the citywide champs. I got to ask Mark Mariscal to come up first, the Superintendent for the Department of Recreation and Parks. Mark, come on in here and say a few words on behalf of John Muckler. Give the Recreation Parks Department a little hand.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. The Department of Recreation and Parks, which has tens of thousands of youth playing in our sports, this City Council has funded through the mayor's office, our Girls Play L.A. program, our youth subsidies this year, which have brought in an extra 5,000 youths playing football, basketball, baseball, soccer, and volleyball throughout Los Angeles. So on behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks, it's great to see these seven-year-olds behind me, oh, you guys are a little older, a little bigger, but it's great that we continue to create community through people parks and programs because of the funding through the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And Serena Fiss, who's a great director at Pan Pacific, for a few words. Serena.
I'd like to.
Jerry Chambers, too.
Jerry Chambers. I'd like to thank the City Council for honoring our children today. They worked hard this year, and they became city champions, and I'm going to introduce you to the Sports Director, Jerry Chambers.
Thank you, Serena, and I'm just going to echo what she just said about the City Council honoring our great guys. We have a family, the family of Pan Pacific, because most of these kids, they came in at five years old, six years old, and they came all the way through. I've only been at Pan Pacific since, for six years, and these kids have played that whole time, grew up, grew up through the park system, and their families come from great families, and we couldn't have pulled it off without their families, because they had to go to practice, they had to have team parents, bring snacks, that was the good part for me, but these kids are great. I think we want to bring up the coach now.
Just a second, Jerry. I'm going to bring him up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries, Jerry.
All right, all right. Okay, okay, Councilman.
Jerry Chambers, a big hand. I wanted to hear that, and to hear in public how important the Park Department programs are, because we've got the budget coming up, and I know we've got a lot of challenge, but look, these are the great youth of Los Angeles. I know I was just on your park last Sunday, and there was the 300 girls from the Wilshire Softball League. So behind a great director and a superintendent and a head of sports is a coach, and Anthony Cathouse right here is the coach of the city championship Pan Pacific All-Stars. Anthony, let's hear it for Anthony.
President Garcetti and council members, it's truly an honor to be here today, and what you see here behind me is just a great family of parents who are dedicated and do this for the betterment of their kids, and a group of great kids that have had the honor of coaching, and these aren't going to be our future leaders. It's not just about football, it's about life, and at Pan Pacific, that's what I'm just so honored to be in that system with Jerry and Serena, and Councilman Labonge is always supportive, so like I said, I'm just totally honored to be here today and represent Pan Pacific in this way, and thank you again.
Thank you. We'll give the coaches all a big hand. This special coach, Nathan Ward from the City All-Star Pan Pacific, for a few words. Nathan.
I just want to thank the council office for having us here. We had a really great season. We had an excellent coach who taught us what we needed to do, and I just want to thank this whole staff, Jerry and Serena, for having a great season.
All right, now, here we're going to go. All-Stars, line up right behind this man right here. We're going to call your name out right here.
Assistant Coach.
Oh, good. Assistant Coach, good to see you.
And our scout.
Oh, scout, good job. We're going to do it right here. You're going to help me. Coach, come over here. We're going to do this right here. We're going to take a picture and back. We've got 119 seconds left, but we're going to call a 3:38 power blast on two, okay? So that means when we call and give you the certificate, we're going to go boom, boom, and you're going to run over there in the back room, and we're going to get you right out here real quick. So you're going to help me here. Who's this first young man right here?
Daniel.
Daniel Bradbury. Daniel, get up here. Jog through, Daniel. Jog through, keep going. We'll get you right there. Good job. We're going to do that. Joe Brandon, here, big Joe.
Joe, good job.
Joe, good job. Jog right through there, Joe, all the way. Alex.
Cephus.
Cephus, Alex, good job, Alex. Good job, all the way, Alex. Here we go. A.J. Frank, here we go, right there. Take the handoff, open it up like this, right, coach, just like that. Here we go. Tony.
Gasparretti.
Gasparretti, Tony. Give Tony a big hand right there. Malcolm Holland. All right, give him a big hand. Corey Jones.
Corey.
All right, Corey, here we go. Good job. Open that hand, like I had that handoff right way there, Corey.
Get that handoff when you come on.
Okay, Michael.
Kreisman.
Kreisman, Michael, big job, Michael, good job. Jog through there. Jog now, out there, out there. Anderson Lane, here we go. Good job. Ernie Singleton, good job for one of our coaches right there. KJ Smith.
KJ.
KJ, good job. Here we go. Nathan Ward, again, good speech, Nathan. Ryan Willis, here we go. Right there, here we go. We're almost there, an overtime there. Ryan Wasaki, good job, Ryan. Kason Leslie, good job, assistant coach and scout. We got it all right here, and lastly, but not least, is Sean Shepherd. Give him a big hand there, Anthony. Mr. President, thank you all very much. Support our local parks, and they'll certainly make a world of difference. Thank the parents, too. Big, big hand for everybody, Pan Pacific City champs.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
I turn it back to you, and right now, I was looking for that, right there. Here we go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. And with that, like to.
Rodriguez, give her a hand for Recreation Parks.
Veronica, congratulations. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Padilla for our next presentation. Mr. Padilla. And after this presentation, we appreciate people's patience. We know there's a lot of folks here. We have our agenda to run through, and we'll be taking public comment as soon as we run through the agenda as our next order of business. Mr. Padilla.
We're going to handle that in the back.
Okay, that's fine. Well, we could just hand one for the coach.
Hey, guys. How are you? All right, welcome to City Hall. I want you guys all to sit around me, okay? Okay.
Excuse me, if we can please have order in chambers right now for our last presentation. We will get to public comment next, I promise you that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I think when these, when my special guests here arrived this morning, I think they were, and we're going to make good on this special recognition, but they've also been privy to a great civics lesson, as they've sat here through a few presentations and seen some wonderful people be recognized for their contributions to the city and the community, and so they come away with that added experience. But colleagues, standing with me are the 2006 Winter State Champions for the United States Slow Pitch Softball Association from my district in Silmar, California. So I ask that you please give them a hand. To put this in context, a lot of people remember the year 1994, when a Little League team from Northridge, California, from Greg Smith's district, were the Little League World Series Champions, and I would venture to say that we have another Little League World Series Champion team in the making. They come from my district, as I mentioned, and they are the Silmar Jayhawks. Coached by David Sebedra, the Silmar Jayhawks participated in the USSA tournament in 2006, Winter Tournament, playing against teams from Garden Grove to Oxnard to Playa del Mar to Corona. That's a big geographic territory with a lot of talent and a lot of competition. They went 5-0 in that tournament undefeated, and won the championship game on February 4th of this year, coming from a 3-2 deficit, come from behind win, and they beat the Silmar Bums by a score of 4-3 to capture the championship, and we're hoping to help them move on to the national championship, which will take place in Colorado this year. So I want to congratulate the team, congratulate their parents, and even though it's a school day that they're here, and even though it's a work day, we have a lot of great parent support here for this wonderful presentation, and I want to ask to come forward and say a few words. Coach David.
Members of the City Council, I just want to say thank you for taking the time amongst all these important issues to recognize these young men for an accomplishment that they did, and bringing forth something more important up here to be in front of all you fine women and men, something that they can take with them for the rest of their lives and help them grow. Mr. Padilla, who has always been very proactive with the sports in the city of San Fernando, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Padilla and his aide, Ruben Zaragoza, who took the time to organize this for them, to all the family members who have the trust and faith in me to guide these young men. Thank you all.
So before I present a certificate to the coach, let me just say, colleagues, we talk a lot about sports here, when we bring teams.
Coming from a 3-2 deficit, come from behind win. And they beat the Silmar Bums by a score of 4-3 to capture the championship and were hoping to help them move on to the national championship, which will take place in Colorado this year. So I want to congratulate the team, congratulate their parents. And even though it's a school day that they're here, and even though it's a workday, we have a lot of great parent support here for this wonderful presentation. And I want to ask to come forward and say a few words. Coach David. There you go.
Members of the city council, I just want to say thank you for taking the time amongst all these important issues to recognize these young men for an accomplishment that they did and bringing forth something more important up here to be in front of all you fine women and men. Something that they can take with them for the rest of their lives and help them grow. Mr. Padilla, who has always been very proactive with the sports in the city of San Fernando. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Padilla and his aide, Ruben Zaragoza, who took the time to organize this for them. To all the family members who have the trust and faith in me to guide these young men. Thank you all.
So before I present a certificate to the coach, let me just say, colleagues, we talk a lot about sports here. We bring teams from football, basketball, baseball, wrestling, and others that we're proud of these young men and young women because there's women who play softball as well. Not just on their athletic accomplishments by bringing home this trophy, but we know that because of their coach, because of their parents, they're learning how to be good citizens of the community as well. Learning about hard work and discipline and teamwork and sportsmanship. So with that, I want to present this certificate to the coach and present certificates to the kids when we go to the back room to take pictures, okay?
And Mr. Reyes would like to add a few words as well to congratulate you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Council Padilla for allowing these young people, both men and women. This is your hour. You should know that in San Fernando Valley, you've had many great heroes. You have a great singer and Ricky Valence. You've got great representatives, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Padilla. And I hope you understand that with your parents, the love and care they're showing, and making sure you have your uniform, make sure you get to the games, then maybe someday you'll be behind that podium presenting an award to young people from your neighborhood. So congratulations. Keep up the good work, and don't forget this day. We'd love to see you behind that speaker one day doing the same things for your community. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla. That finishes our presentations for this Friday. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present in the court. Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendall seconds. If there's no objection, those are approved, unanimous vote. Next order?
Mr. President, do you wish to go through the agenda at this time?
Let's go through the agenda, and then we'll return for public comment.
There's a request on item number five from Mr. Weston to continue that matter for one week, and the new date would be February 24th.
Continue to the 24th. There's no objection. We will continue item number five till the 24th. Colleagues, okay?
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 15. Item number five has already been acted on. And items 2 and 3, the reports have been submitted on those items. And item number 15, there are multiple reports.
Okay. Quite a few things at once. So which ones... Let's... Should we take up any specials on those, colleagues? Mr. Smith?
What a surprise. 2, 3, 11, 10, 12, and 15. And I... Item number 11, I just asked that we return to committee. I believe Ms. Perry is satisfied with that, and we'll go back to me.
Okay. Which committee is that?
Back to IGR.
Okay. There's no objection returning 11 to IGR. We will do that. We will call 2, 3, 10, 12, and 15 special. Other specials, Ms. Han?
Item 7, please.
Number 7, lucky 7. Mr. Padilla? Okay, we're covered. Any other specials? Mr. Rosendall?
Special item number 1, we've amended it. And-
That's in the-
For the special meeting, okay. All right. So on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 16 through 28. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials for 16 through 28, please? Yes?
28, please.
28.
And, Mr. President, you have cards on 18, 19, and 28.
Okay. We will call 18, 19, and 24 special of cards from the public?
I'm sorry, that was 28.
Oh, I'm sorry, 28. Okay. Not 20, correct? Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Weezer? Special?
No, I have no specials. But I have reconsideration after the-
Okay. No problem. Let's open and close public hearings then for the remainder of the items. And if we can open the roll on that, close the roll on the balance, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, I believe Mr. Weezer wanted to reconsider an item from yesterday's meeting.
Okay. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that the council reconsider and adopt item number 11 from Wednesday's... This Wednesday's the 15th council meeting. It is council file 002308-S3, which is reconstruction of Broadway sidewalks along Broadway and Third Street.
Okay. Let's open the roll on reconsideration first, unless anybody wishes to be heard. Seeing none, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that's before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you very much, colleagues.
Okay. Would you like to send forthwith, Mr. Weezer? Okay. Let's go ahead and send that forthwith. All right. Next items?
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yeah, let's do that right now. If we can invite forward for public comment at this time. We have about 56 public comment cards, colleagues. We've tried to ask folks who are speaking on similar items as much as possible to not repeat what has come before. I'd like to ask Rose Murphy to come forward as our first speaker, be followed by Frida Marlin as our next speaker, and then Sheila Bernard will be our third speaker.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Rosa is sort of orchestrating this group? And she's outside right now? She's right behind-
It's a different... Not Rosa, Rose. I'm sorry. Rose Murphy? Rose Murphy?
My mistake, sorry.
No problem. Welcome, Ms. Murphy.
Hi. My name is Rose Murphy. And I want to go back with the story that happened some years ago. We've been fighting at Lincoln Place for many years. And I remember Councilmember John Fararo telling his fellow council members, "Do not give too much support to the tenants of Los Angeles and not too much support for the landlord." I guess he meant for people to... You guys to straddle the middle of the road. Anyway, the pendulum has swung in favor of the landlord, and Lincoln Place is at risk. You know, we are going to be evicted as of March 20th, and I advise city council to have the city attorney's office record the conditions of the VTT. We are low-income seniors needing housing, and which the low-income housing is almost non-existent at this time. What we need to do is to build more low-income housing and not focus on condominiums and townhomes that people can't afford. And so Aimco needs to stop thinking of redevelopment and think more of staying in the rental business. They have no need to slash and destroy. So anyway, please help us. We are elderly and disabled, and we need to stay in our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frida Marlin? And Ms. Marlin, I know that Mr. Rosendall has a special gift for you. If you just look over this way?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Frida, not only are you a leader and an incredible community person, but today is your birthday.
Thank you.
And I've got here a certificate saying, "I join your family and friends in celebrating and honoring you on your 82nd birthday. Best wishes and much happiness on this very special day." Frida.
Thank you so much. I want you.
Sweetheart, it's yours.
Thank you.
Just take a photo. And we're all blessed that you were born.
Thank you.
I certainly am.
My son. I just want to say that I have been here at city council 20 years fighting for our beautiful, beautiful home. And I'll keep on fighting because it is the most wonderful place to live. And it's for the GIs, too, that I want this place. This is a... They're coming home, and it was built for the GIs, and they should be able to have a home when they come home. I know what it means because that's what happened when my husband in World War II came home. There was no place to live. Here we have a beautiful, well-built place to live and all these wonderful people that want to stay here and build on it with children and everything. It's just unbelievable. Please, come out and see it, and you'll know what I'm talking about. It has made me very, very happy to see the wonderful people that are still there. And we're all seniors and handicapped. And they want to put a sign on our door, March 25th, that we're out and there's no place to go. There is no affordable housing. We've been trying. This is the home that we started, and we want to stay there. And I don't know what else to say. Please, get up, everybody that's in Lincoln Place right now. Please, please, keep our home and keep it for the GIs, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Sheila Bernard. And Sheila Bernard will be followed by Bill Chappell and Paul Hirschfield.
Thank you, councilmembers. Bill Rosendall is putting forward a resolution, a motion. And I want to thank councilmembers Garcetti, Grul, Han, Reyes, Zine, and Smith for seconding that motion. We are hopeful... We are hopeful that by recording the conditions at Lincoln Place, the tenant protections which you wrote and accepted and put into that track map will actually protect the tenants as you intended them to do. And we thank you very much for that. We... In case there are any doubts or in case you get contrary advice, challenge anyone to show you a law that stops you from doing that because jurisdictions all over this state are doing that for enforcement purposes. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bernard. Our next speaker is Bill Chappell.
Hi, my name is Bill Chappell. I'm a resident of Lincoln Place. First of all, I want to thank Bill Rosendall for the courage it has taken to follow this process, to support us in our struggle at Lincoln Place. We're really grateful, Bill. Thank you. We know how much... We know how much opposition there is. And we also thank those of you who have co-signed this bill. We understand this is a citywide problem, a statewide problem, a nationwide problem. And it is... This is just the beginning of our battle. Recording the conditions is... Should be a natural process. It's done in other states automatically. San Diego is fighting a similar battle right now. We need to align and understand everything that's going on. And we are here to help you with that process. And I just want to say, Council President Garcetti, I saw you this morning on LA Weekly, and you were talking about your love for this and democracy in action. I'm new to this, and I'm one of those people you were talking about. And I'm really, really thrilled with the opportunity to participate like this. But I also want that process to mean that we get the actions we need. And I know it takes a lot of courage. There's a great deal more to do. We're at the tipping point. And we can see a change where people like... The people at Aimco can learn to understand and work in cooperation with us. I had an experience last week of having my name put in this chamber for the first time. I'm a play-of-low-profile, below-the-radar person. And I went home that night. Spike Marlin mentioned my name, said you guys should talk to me about recording the conditions. And there was a three-day notice to quit on my tour. Now, I looked at my rent receipt, and it was written in English. And I thought, geez, these guys really know how to love you. And I love them, too. And we want to work with them. But I love you guys more, and I love democracy more. And we have a lot more work to do. So thank you so much for what you're about to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Paul Hirschfield to be followed by Rick Tuttle. The great Rick Tuttle.
Thank you. My name is Paul Hirschfield. I am now a former tenant of Lincoln Place, having been evicted in December. My partner and my son and I were all put out rather hastily. I, too, want to thank Councilman Rosendall and the members of his staff who've been working really hard to make this happen, make something happen for us. Earlier this week, Aimco, the owner of Lincoln Place and one of the country's biggest landlords, bullied the state historic office into reversing itself on its decision to give the property historic designation granted in August and reaffirmed in November of last year. They've agreed to void the decisions of August and November and hear the case for designation anew again in May. Here in Los Angeles, Aimco has resolutely ignored the conditions of development it agreed to, challenging the city to exercise its power to protect its citizens. The city's response to this challenge, however, has been lackluster at best. The city attorney has consistently advised this council to play it safe, thereby sending a clear message to Aimco and other corporations doing business in Los Angeles that they have nothing to fear, that the city will not intervene on behalf of its citizenry, no matter how flagrant the abuse of power. I was evicted, as I said, on December 6th. I will never again be able to afford to live in Venice, while my partner and I could probably make it work, cutting back here and there. Paying $2,300 a month for rent on an apartment for her, my son, and myself would be a ridiculous waste of money. As for my friends and former neighbors who have fewer economic resources and opportunities due to age, class, and ethnicity, the situation is obviously far worse. They are finding it nearly impossible to come up with an affordable place to live in Los Angeles. Please support Councilman Rosendall's motion to regord the conditions of the track map. Please send a message to Aimco that doing business in this city has a price that includes civic responsibility. civic responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to especially welcome the former controller of the city of Los Angeles, who served with great distinction, Mr. Rick Tuttle.
Well, it's great to be with you again, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you. And I want to begin by congratulating Bill Rosendahl for standing tall on behalf of the tenants of Lincoln Place and the Venice community. You know, Bill, Bill Rosendahl and I have a number of things in common. And I appeared on your show a few times. You did not always treat me gently, I might add. And also, we started out in Robert Kennedy's campaign. They used to say that the distinction between Robert Kennedy and Joseph McCarthy was that Joseph McCarthy picked on little people. People, by little people, what I mean, let me withdraw that phrase. By people who were down on their luck. Schoolteachers who might have signed petitions, labor leaders who might have signed petitions that had already been driven out of the labor movement, so on. Robert Kennedy took on the heavyweights. Robert Kennedy took on Hoffa. Robert Kennedy took on George Wallace. When necessary, Robert Kennedy and President Kennedy took on Nikita Khrushchev, and he took on Big Steel when it was necessary. But Rosendahl is taking on heavyweights. And Robert Kennedy, I think, would be proud of you, Bill. On behalf, let's focus some attention on this. You heard our colleague speak a few minutes ago. She is representative of those who are left. There are also a couple of hundred others who've been forced out. Councilman Reyes, you're a student of the subject. And by the way, I want to thank you for signing this motion, Mr. Chairman. I know some of the others cannot sign because of Plum, you know, because of the responsibilities. But I think this is a historically interesting question, whether this is the biggest eviction in Los Angeles history, or the biggest eviction since Chavez Ravine. This put the Sheriff's Department in a terrible position. Let's work this out. Let me turn to my friends for a minute. I have, heaven knows, we all have friends in the Third House, the Latham and Watkins of the world, and in the, let's do the right thing on this. And as I conclude, let's do the right thing on this. And in conclusion, I also want to thank President of the Council, Garcetti, for signing on, for Wendy Grul, for Janice Han, for Chairman Reyes, for Dennis Zein, and for Greg Smith for signing on. That is terrific. Bill Rosendahl, thank you very much. On behalf of the people of the district, which I serve, and also on behalf of the tenants at Lincoln Place and the community, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We, I think Mr. Rosendahl would like to briefly respond within the confines of the Brown Act to a couple of things that were mentioned. But this time, I'd like to recognize him, and then after that, we'll read the other names of the Lincoln Place folks that were here. We do have about 35 other public speaker cards. So we thank you for respecting that, and we'll make sure that we get the other speakers on other subjects into. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, first, for allowing this public hearing timeframe to be right now. I'm literally leaving for a press conference on homelessness, as we as a city and the county and the state are working on that issue. But this is the most important issue to me at this moment, because we don't want to make more people homeless. And this situation will make more people homeless. We're trying to solve homelessness, not add to it. I got to thank my colleagues with great gratitude, humility, Ed Reyes, Greg Smith, Janice Han, Wendy Grul, Dennis Zein, and Eric Garcetti. I want to thank you all for seconding this motion. We will take this motion before the Plum Committee the week after next, and we'll continue the discussion there. And then it will come back to the full council for your consideration. My hope is this sends a strong message to Amco, that people matter to us, not profits, but people come first. There must be a way on which they can do the development that makes sense within the Venice-specific plan, within the context of that land, and at the same time, preserve and protect the people that are there. To me, it's all about people. And I just got to tell you, I am most grateful for my colleagues supporting me on this. And Frida, happy 82nd birthday. We're all blessed you were born. God bless you all, and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zein, did you want to say something right now?
Just briefly.
Then the Brown Act.
I signed on with my colleagues on that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zein, can I just interrupt you for one quick sec? Can we just reclarify what we can and can't cover? Because I know, as we've begun to comment, sometimes after public comment, I just want the city attorney to remind us of what we can and can't say. If you would just restate that. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. We can please have order in the chambers? Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could read the section of the Brown Act, that'll put them to sleep if I read this. No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of the legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights. So you can make a brief response to a person who's made a public comment.
Let me talk about democracy in neighborhood council. Let me talk about grassroots getting involved. When people say Los Angeles is disconnected from communities, this clearly shows that we're not disconnected, and we try to work together, resolve the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. The names I'd like to read into the record are, these are just for the record, Spike Marlin, thank you, Jotun Valentine, excuse me if I mispronounce that, Barbara Eisenberg, Felisa Kohan, Setsuko Kosakai, Douglas Ertman, Sharon Hagan, Aiken Weiss, David Ewing, Chris Tubin, and Noel Weiss. We have some other cards that I wasn't sure if they were South Central Farmers or Lincoln Place. So if you didn't hear your name, I'll be reading some of those names as well into the record. And thank you all very much again. I'd like to call forward now David Bush, if he is here. Sochi Tyluhan? Peter Chernif? Any of those folks here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We appreciated Peter's words as well. Chris Ford? Is this on South Central Farmers?
Yes. Are you going to give us an amount of time to have collectively, or is it planned?
We technically have 20 minutes for public comment. Obviously, there's a lot of people here, so I'd like to accommodate more than that today if there's no objection. But we have about 30-something cards, I think, from South Central Farmers and their supporters. So we can do it in whatever order you'd like, if there's certain people. But we'd obviously like to try to keep it to, you know, 10 or 15 minutes.
Of course. We probably have about half a dozen speakers.
Okay. Why don't you bring them forward? If they'll just say their names, I'll leave it up to you, and then we'll enter that into the record and read the other. Why don't you just decide which of those first ones? If people can state their names as they come up, and I'll make sure that their cards get in.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
One minute each? You want it? All right.
Please.
Ergui Baria?
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. President and council members. The 14 acres of South Central Farm is the largest urban farm in the United States, tended by 350 families in the past 14 years. These families, hard-working immigrants from Mexico and Central America, who are impoverished according to the USDA standards, use their farm plots to keep food on their table. All farm families take part as voters in a general assembly that handles farm-wide So the farm additionally serves as direct democracy. Some farmers even serve it in the city neighborhood council and become models to the community as land use, drawing academic and corporate representatives from far away as Colorado, Bolivia, Venezuela, and Palestine, and Italy.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I'm Chris Ford, the Los Angeles resident and attorney. Mr. Ibaria, as he pointed out, this group of farmers has become a real model of community land use, drawing, as he said, academics and corporate representatives from as far away as Bolivia, Venezuela, Palestine, and Italy. Tragically, however, the successful and unique model of farming diversity and democracy is threatened to fall under the blade of the bulldozer and the billy club of the sheriff, all because of a backroom deal this city cut that exudes the same stench of rotting garbage that the farm property once did before, is converted into an oasis of green space and cultural conviviality. Council members, your predecessors in 2003 gave wealthy developer Ralph Horowitz this piece of land for a lousy $5 million, even though the same piece of land had sold for $13 million back in 1994, when real estate values were about a third of what they were in 2003. Nearly as ridiculous as the giveaway price Horowitz paid for this land in 2003 as what he intends to do with it. Build a warehouse. Have you been down to that part of town, council members? It is littered with warehouses. The last thing in the world that part of town needs is another warehouse. In contrast, that part of town most desperately needs green space and a means to feed people paid such low wages that they are on the verge of going hungry. Mayor Vera Gross's suggestion to the community buy back the land is absurd. The city got itself into this predicament, and the city can get itself out. The city should take the farm property back and retain it as green space. Don't let Ralph Horowitz and his high-priced lawyers bully you. The Supreme Court has ruled that you can downzone property as long as you don't wipe out its value. You should downzone the property and then buy it from Horowitz at a reduced price, or simply just retake it by eminent domain. What you should not do, council members, is let Horowitz boot 350 families into the gritty streets of South Central without enough to eat. Thank you.
Frank Tamborello. Good morning, council. I'm Frank Tamborello with the L.A. Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness. And we've heard both of these issues today, hunger and homelessness. And just generally speaking, it doesn't make sense to spend a lot of money to eradicate hunger and homelessness when you can prevent a lot of it in the first place. In the case of Lincoln Place, don't evict the tenants. You won't add to homelessness. And in the case of the farm, don't evict the farmers. Do not let the deal with Horowitz go through, or use what you can with eminent domain to stop it from happening. Last week, Councilmember Padilla sponsored a conference together with the county and the school district about obesity and diabetes in our kids, and how horrible it was, and the whole city had put on 400 million pounds or something like that. You know what part of the problem is? Our kids think that food is supposed to look like this. That it's supposed to be like a Rice Krispie treat in an aluminum package with mono-diglycerides and all this kind of stuff. They don't know where our food comes from. They don't know what fresh fruits and vegetables are. And with the South Central Farm, you have a huge opportunity, not only to save the livelihood of the 350 farmers who are feeding their families, but to educate kids all across L.A. about community gardening. And I know we have other gardens, but those are much smaller. And it would send a tremendous signal for Los Angeles to save this 14-acre farm. I also want to mention that the American Community Garden Association conference is coming up in August and September. I can't remember exactly which, but it would certainly be an embarrassing thing for community gardeners from all over the United States to come here and find out that the city didn't do anything to preserve the most remarkable community garden that exists in North America. So I urge you to do whatever you can. And, you know, we've heard all the legal arguments and things, but we know that you can save this farm. We know that you can take that land back, and we very strongly urge you to do so, not only on behalf of me and all these farmers, myself. There's about 25 other organizations in the L.A. Food Justice Network that support this. Please save the farm. Thank you.
My name is Samuel Sanchez. I work with Food Not Bombs, and Food Not Bombs has autonomous chapters all over the world, fighting to eradicate homelessness, industrialization, capitalization, in all its forms, like Lincoln Place, like the South Central Farm. I think what the city has done and not done is really, really ridiculous. For the community to lose millions of dollars, for developers to make millions of dollars, and for the city to turn around and sell it to itself and make more millions, and then ask us to buy it back for an inflated price, this is ridiculous, unfair, and you're destroying communities. If you guys really want this to be a cultural landmark, this is the last straw. Things like this make communities what they are. You can't find this anywhere else. This is the largest community farm in the U.S., in the whole nation. And it can't be replaced. The farmers can't be replaced. The children who run around safely in South Central cannot be replaced. There's no other place for this to happen. I beg you guys, please. I've been here a lot of times, and I know you guys don't listen. I know you guys have your own little side conversations. But this is something that, if your mom was here, she would tell you, you better pay attention, because this is real.
Good morning. My name is Wetele Lopez. I'm a labor organizer in Los Angeles. I live in South Los Angeles. It's very important for us to put our cellphones away, to get off the phone, sit down, and show some respect to the people who you represent. I saw a lot of, I've been standing here since this morning, and I've seen a lot of eagles being stroked, a lot of certificates being handed out, and a lot of laughs and handshakes. Your assignment for today is to stand up and tell us what you think an organic, fresh, homegrown garden is, and the importance it is to this community. And hand out some certificates and stroke some eagles to the people, the 350 families who are feeding kids and people in this community. In our community, we go to the markets, we don't have access to whole, fresh, organic foods. But my son, who's a year and a half, has been raised on the food at South Central Farm. And he's going to continue to be, hopefully, if our leaders will take a stand. Mr. Bernard Parks, Civil Rights Walk of Fame, Trumpet Award. I wonder how loud you're going to blow your trumpet to protect our civil rights. I wonder, I wonder how hard you're going to fight, if you're going to take your suits and ties off and get your hands dirty? If you're going to take your nice clothes off and your pretty rings and get your hands dirty, and protect the people in this community who have the right to that land? You want, let's go before Horowitz. Let's go before Horowitz. Let's talk about Yanga, the original name of Los Angeles, the tribes of people who existed on this land, who grew food and had everything destroyed by invaders. And now we have a private invader who you're going to protect and put, Mr. Rosendahl, who's not sitting here right now, spoke about protecting people before profits. I hope he understands how important that is when he says that. Please protect our kids, protect our food, protect our neighborhood, and protect what we want that came out of the '92 riots, something positive, not negative.
I can ask, if we can, to have three more speakers, including this one? So two more after this one, if that's okay? Thank you.
I'd also like to speak on behalf of the farmers in South Central. I also belong to a community farmer.
Sorry, will you give us your name, ma'am?
Pardon? Susan Regali.
Thank you, Susan.
I was a farmer at Milliken Junior High School. We were evicted from the school. We felt, as gardeners there from early morning till late evening, that it was kind of like a vigilante force in the neighborhood. People shared amongst the communities, talked about problems in the communities. And the school saw us as a liability. They then evicted us from the garden. Within a month after our eviction from Milliken Junior High School, a student shot and killed another school in the field adjacent to the garden area. We need people out in our communities. We need to realize that, as long as everybody's shut away and there is no communication among people, how do we know what the problems are? I have nothing to say here. I'm very happy with the job. Mr. Zein represented me in my house, was under eminent domain two years ago. Thank God that I had this support from representatives, that I didn't lose my house, which took me 47 years of my life to buy. But there's a group of people out there who are no longer represented. And we think that this is important to the communities, that people are taken care of, that they're able to take care of themselves. I was a member of that community because I had three small children, was a single mother. I fed my kids from that garden. I never had federal or state or any kind of assistance. It's important. If there were a natural disaster tomorrow, would these people be able to feed how many hundreds of people in South Central? We need these community gardens, not just in South Central, but in a lot of other places, and not be restricted from being able to propagate for ourselves. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Fowler. I'm a grad student at the University of Southern California, studying urban planning in the School of Policy Planning and Development. I'm here for one reason, and that's to express support for the South Central Farmers on behalf of many of the students of urban planning at USC, and to show the farmers that they can count on our support. First, we would like to remind everyone that this garden is the largest of its kind throughout the entire nation. This shows, this should be considered a great opportunity for all of us. This urban garden can serve as an example for the rest of the country. And the preservation of this farm not only represents an important step for the urban farmers, but for the community, and for the region, and for the entire nation. The benefits it offers are many. We talk so much about having poor air quality. The farm, the plantation, green spaces have an amazing way of just taking contamination out of the air and cleaning up the air. Public health, human capital, groundwater retention, all those things, this park helps to better the community in those ways. It is, in effect, also a way of rectifying some of the environmental injustices that characterize many low-income central cities. The case is also strikingly similar to the Cornfields Park. In that case, developers wished to build a warehouse in a community that did not want more warehouses. What they needed was open space. So it's incredibly similar to that. And in that case, the city decided and helped out, and now it is a beautiful, thriving open space. That is what we ask, and we ask the city to take a leading role in the preservation of the urban farm for the sustainability of the community and of Los Angeles. We ask you to please to save this urban oasis from destruction. Also, I've collected 30 signatures for the mayor that are from other urban policy, urban planning students, supporting the South Central Farmers.
Thank you. We'll make sure Sergeant Arum takes those. Thank you. And one last speaker? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Clemens. I'm a high school science teacher in West Los Angeles, and I live in Koreatown. I've been to the farm a few times. I'm about to say it's from my perspective. I don't represent the farm. From my perspective, this is a case of city-initiated racism and classism that we're even here today. I've never heard of a white or a rich community having its green space or its community meeting spaces taken away in one covert backroom deal. Perhaps this is because most so-called land developers are rich and white. So clearly, such people would rather take other communities' land and livelihoods rather than their own for development. And their own profit, actually, is what development is. The imminent threat of the South Central Farm is a deeply felt first shot, from my perspective, in the race and class war that has been brewing in Los Angeles for a long time. The low-intensity war has had major eruptions, and the land being discussed right now, having been set aside for the South Central community, was a commendable gesture on the city's part during one of those recent eruptions, back in '92, like somebody mentioned. However, as I've just mentioned, the insidiously racist and classist nature of the bullet just fired at this community is being felt, observed, and considered. Did Horowitz and the city imagine that this community would allow their green community space be taken and built into a warehouse? That the children that once gardened and played under trees would just accept playing in the shadows of a cold, hard, concrete building? That the farming families would docilely take to a Big Mac with cheese and stale television for evening bonding time, like so many other low-income communities only have the choice to do? Only Horowitz and the city officials know what they were thinking when exercising the supremely callous agency to, in one secret deal, pass this land off to someone besides the hundreds of families that are currently beautifying it. What will happen next? I don't know. I recommend an immediate apology from the city, for one thing, and Mr. Horowitz, for engaging in these racist and classist actions. I recommend giving the land back to the community once and for all, and having this be a city that actually stands for what it says it stands for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also read into the record, for the record, the following names of folks who did come as well on this issue. David Bush, Sochi Tyluhan, sorry, Tulan, Luhan, excuse me, Peter Chernif, Jorge Alberto, Juan Villalobos, Rosa Romero, Lois Arkin, Brian Thompson, Jenny Jenny Calderon, Elizabeth Hernandez, Miguel Tomas, Araceli Tlatoa, Elizabeth Vaquero, Candido Santana, José Santana, Gerardo Santana, Everardo Santana, Tomás Pedro, Maria Cruz, Joaquín Paredes, Joaquín Cienfuegos, Rosa Romero, Farimares Nabari—that might have been on a different issue, I'm sorry—Gretchen Seemers, Laura Lindley, Juan Escobar, and perhaps on this issue, I'm not sure, Douglas Millar as well. I want to thank you all for coming on this and call Melrose Larry Green forward as well. The right for public comment, my apologies, is actually—it's 20 minutes under state law, and we've gone over that, so I would ask your indulgence if there's any written materials or anything you'd like to give to us or communicate with us. We'd be happy to do that, but I'd like to call Larry Green forward right now.
After he speaks, I would like to have a chance to submit my public comment in person by speaking. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Green?
Thank you all very much. I was—listened to all the comments this morning. I thought the speaker's comments about Councilman Chief Parks were disgraceful. The comments were disgraceful. Young man, you know nothing about Bernard Parks and how hard he struggled to get where he is. You know nothing about Bernard Parks. Your comments about Bernard Parks were—you owe an apology. It was a disgrace. And on behalf of the people of the city of Los Angeles, I found those comments completely inappropriate and off the mark. Maybe you need to go to Brandeis and Cornell like I did and grow up with African-American people like I did in Brownsville, East New York. You know nothing. I think this morning's meetings are fantastic. Fantastic, fantastic, fantastic. The LA Times and their criticism knows nothing about your meetings. And that meeting with USC and UCLA was fantastic, too. This is a city for everybody, not just for the farmers, not just for the developers, not just for the Melrose Larry Greens, but for everybody. I'm so glad I live in Los Angeles. I would not be 1,000 miles near Rudy Giuliani or Mayor Bloomberg, but I'm proud to call Antonio Villarosa my friend. And I'm proud that as a Republican, I helped get him elected mayor of Los Angeles. And I'll tell you, I'm very close to becoming a Democrat again. That's why I'm wearing blue today. And we need more Democrats like you 13 around here and less like Bill and Hillary Clinton. Now, I said that. But we need more Democrats like Herb Wesson and Tom Labange and Jose Weezer and someday the future mayor of LA, Janice Hahn. We need more Democrats like you and like Bernard Parks. And you farmers, I sympathize with you. I've worked on the kibbutzim in Israel, but, you know, you've got to be nice with these people. They're the ones that control the city, not me and you. Anyway, I'm pretty much out of time, but the mayor has a great idea to expand the subway to—and he's got my backing 100%. And let's focus on Mayor Villarosa and his vision for Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I'm happy to give you one minute, sir, but I just want to reiterate that under the law, there's not an obligation to do that. If there's no objection, we'll do one minute.
Thank you very much, Council President. I will be brief. Hi, my name is Farimares Nabavi, and I'm speaking as a San Fernando Valley voter and resident. I'm here to speak today on the South Central Farm and submit a unique set of comments on that. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that the city council voted to approve this settlement with Ralph Horowitz at a price far below the property's market value. The city council should have given the South Central farmers an opportunity to provide input prior to taking a flawed action, recognizing that as one of the several former property owners, Horowitz had a first right of refusal. The opportunity existed to create an alternate arrangement. However, right now, there is opportunities to tap into several funding sources such as Prop O and Prop 50, given the significant water quality, water supply, and flood control benefits in an area that lacks permeable surfaces. There is a property owned by the MTA at 54th and Avalon that the MTA wants to sell, which would be an opportune place for a swap. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That finishes our public comment. I want to thank everybody for their patience this morning and thank everybody for the comments they gave today. Madam Clerk, if we can return to the regular agenda and actually if we can recess the regular meeting and take up the special council agenda. Is that a special meeting agenda or is it just a special?
I guess it was—
Okay, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Brohan, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosen Dahl Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a core, Mr. President.
Okay. First items, please.
First item, Mr. President, is a Transportation Committee report, and there has been a substitute motion that has been distributed to the council members in lieu of the committee report.
Okay. That has been circulated. Anybody wishing to call that special? Okay. If not, let's open the roll on that.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Do you wish to just accept that as a friendly or do you wish to—
Yes, there's no objection, so we'll accept that as friendly. If we can open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items two and three, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both those items if you wish to take those up now.
All right. Let's hold those on the desk, then.
I'm sorry. Since we're in the special meeting, do you wish to do those right, you know, while we're in this regular—or this special meeting?
Let's see. Is anybody wishing to call them special beyond the cards that we have? If not, I know we have a couple of big items, so why don't we take them up then now if it's for the public comment? So let's take up item number two, and Sylvia Hawkins and Candido Maris, if you'd like to step forward for two minutes of public comment on item number two first. This is on the special agenda, colleagues.
This is on item number two. To the Social Security Administration and to all military captains, as your president, Sylvia Hawkins, we must be aware of Bishop Kennedy Amen is dead. Steve Harvey is under his entire skin from head to toe. Cut down the top of the vertebrae of the back to the end of the spinal cord. Sifted up from the back. You can't tell the difference because of the different styles of jackets. It are split down the back of the miller of the back. And this is what happened with hundreds of black people. Steve Harvey, I'm here to warn you, this style would not work. Sinbad is dead, and Pacific Polis says, and warning black women's too, that Pastor Bonner, Jackie McClellan, would not take over Hollywood or Pasadena. Area of all churches, schools, or jail cells. In San Francisco, in San Fernando, California, is where all Jewish presidents, Ford, Reagan, ex-president, John F. Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, and Lucille Ball was bound by these black people. And this is how black people got up. Now they are rich. The penalty is death. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you very much. Candido Maris?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. But Mr. Garcetti, you said it all when it came to our Filipino brothers. I would just like to add, as a member of the Knights of Columbus, our Filipino brothers continue each and every day to make the greatest city and the greatest country even greater. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris. We appreciate your comments. Colleagues, we have this before us. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Let's go forthwith on that one. Item number three now, Sylvia Hawkins. I'd like to come forward on item three to be followed by Candido Maris.
Thank you. My name is, again, Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. To the United States of American Legislation Committee, we must say no on sober living housing, hotels, rehabilitation houses, halfway houses for HIV, scar disease, cancer patients, sex offenders. Housing program is no. We must build now slavery laws, a 50-mile open dirt field with iron gates to enslave all prison that are trying to escape of all 18 races. These ones has also been faking, accepting rent as owners and faking tenants, was never paying their rent or any bills. These people that are running from state to state must be guarded and by a man on a horse with a whip to beat them as they teach or as they touch the iron gate to escape. This will be the beginning of slavery back on. We must close down all jail cells in all states, but New York and California only, built on top. And this is where all jail cells will be open to all states and other states. Inmates will be shifted to either New York or California. All other jail cells must be closed because of local government. Jail cells, courts, slavery courts, and all neck-off generation open before the public people and not behind the scene of ex-president Nixon's style of Awar, as he found out what was behind the jail cell walls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, for your thoughts on the state infrastructure bond. We appreciate it. Next, let's—we can open the roll on this if nobody wishes to be heard. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. We can return to the regular agenda—if we can go forthwith on that, too, excuse me. Back to the regular meeting.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, the items called special. Item number two was called special by Councilmember Smith, and there are committee reports that have been submitted, and they all concur.
Okay, we've got a number of items together. Two that interact with one another, I should say, have some relevance with one another. Two and three, obviously. We've got also Mr. Smith included, items 10 and 12, is that right, for those? Colleagues, would you like to take those up together? Mr. Smith, would you like to take them up separately? What's your wish? And we also have a couple other items. I don't know if they're quick ones.
I think we can do them separately. I don't think three will be that—
Okay. Okay. Let's start with number two, then.
Number two was called special by Mr. Smith, and as I—there are committee reports that have been submitted, and they all concur.
Okay. Mr. Smith, on item number two, we also have—we've held public comment on this one already? Is it Madam Clerk?
Yes, public hearing has been held in committee.
There happen to be four cards that—we'd have to have a motion to reopen public comment on those. Mr. Smith?
We have four cards?
Four cards.
I could just move a five-minute public hearing, then.
Okay.
Quick one.
Is there any objection to five-minute public hearing on item number two? Four cards. We have one that is out in the valley at our remote center in Van Nuys. If Walter Prince is still out there—Mr. Padilla, do you want to say something before that?
And I don't believe it's this item, but an item related to this item, the actual BFI contract itself. I understand from some of the other competitors, people who responded to the RFP, that, you know, it's tough for them to make their case before this full city council in two minutes or less. So when that time comes, if we can allow a little bit more time for them to appropriately address the bigger issues here.
Okay. We'll take that up at that time. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Appreciate that. We're checking with our remote facility right now in Van Nuys. Mr. Prince still there? Mr. Prince, please. Two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Walter Prince. I appreciate the opportunity to be talking to you from Van Nuys as opposed to downtown LA. The issue of adopting this Renew LA plan is really a no-brainer. The real question is, why has there been any delay at all in acting on the plan, which was written over a year ago? Recycling had to be forced on this city several years ago, and the trash conversion technologies of all kinds are going to be forced upon us in the future. LA should adopt this plan now and be a leader rather than a follower in this field. What's the delay for adopting a plan that is just going to benefit the city? In the old days, many of our council members tended to do nothing on many urgent issues. And one of the reasons term limits came about was this, and the main reason most of you are now in office. The voters wanted new blood with fresh, new ideas and a political will to take action on important citywide issues that had languished for years, trash collection being one of them. So why the delay on fixing our trash problems? Is it the cost? The mayor wants to spend $5 billion to transport 15,000 or 20,000 people down Wilshire Boulevard to the beach 10 years from now. I'd rather spend a tiny fraction of that money now and see the quality of life improve for 4 million people within the next two or three years. So what's the delay? Is it that nobody knows where the money will come from? Well, there are peer grants from the state of California, and in fact, the IRS is now taking applications for an $800 million clean energy bond issued to provide interest-free financing for several renewable energy projects, including the construction and operation of trash combustion facilities. The applications must be submitted by April 26th—
Mr. Prince, you may not be able to—
—which gives us nine weeks to fill one out.
Mr. Prince, you may not be able to hear the timer here, and I apologize that we haven't installed a two-minute timer for you to watch, but if you could please conclude, that two minutes is up. But go ahead if you'd like to give us a last sentence.
We do have a blueprint. It's called Renew LA. Councilman Greg Smith and his staff have spent many hundreds of hours developing this plan, and I'm very proud to be a constituent in this 12th council district. It may need some tweaking as time passes, but it should be passed today by the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prince. We appreciate your patience out there in the remote facility. Wade Hunter to be followed by Brendan Huffman. And my apologies to Peter Chernif. On item two, this was classified, and this item, too, I think it was special item two. Mr. Chernif still here? Okay. My apologies, that was on the Filipino veterans issue. We will make sure that that gets recorded. Mr. Hunter, thank you.
Okay, thank you, council members. Mr. President, my name is Wade Hunter. I'm president of the North Valley Coalition. You won't need a timer. I just want to say that the North Valley Coalition, all of these people are sitting out here, you know, our community does support Greg's Renew LA plan, and we think that, you know, it should be implemented. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huffman?
Good afternoon. Brendan Huffman with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'll be brief as well. We just want to applaud Greg Smith on his leadership on this very important issue. Solid waste is not an issue that has been addressed in possibly a generation, and it's time to step up. We can recycle a lot of our solid waste, but more importantly, we can use a lot of this solid waste for clean energy alternatives. Several other municipalities around the country are investing in this technology now. We have a bit of an energy crisis here in California, and this could be a win-win situation. It also provides for economic opportunity for a lot of California-based firms that are trying to invest in this technology, provide a benefit. Lastly, this is—solid waste is really about accountability and making sure that we take care of our own waste. There's legislation almost every year introduced by legislators in other counties that specifically say that solid waste from LA County cannot enter their municipalities. So we really have to take care of our own, and we appreciate your leadership on this issue, Councilman Smith, and the LA Chambers in strong support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huffman. That closes public comment for item number two. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, before you today is the overarching policy statement that we brought forward in Renew LA. It is not Renew LA in its totality. There were 14 motions, some of which are still going through the policy committees, but it is a statement of sustainability and environmental leadership for the city of Los Angeles. And look at the successes we've had in this city council. Under the leadership of Jan Perry and Eric Garcetti, we got Prop O on the ballot. People said it would never pass, but the people of LA supported it to clean our storm water runoff. We are investing billions of dollars in our Hyperion, in our treatment plants, to clean our water from our sewer systems. We are investing greatly in the watersheds in the Inyo County and Sierra Nevadas to make sure our water, drinking water is clean, but also not to scarify those communities with the dust that has been created by previous decisions by previous city councils. Look at air quality. Janice Hahn's tremendous work down in the harbor, her vision of the AMP program, the Goods Movement, making sure that we have clean ships in the harbor. What a tremendous investment we are making in that, in air quality. Look at Jan Perry serving on the AQMD, a strong voice for the city of LA, but for air quality standards in the city of Los Angeles that affect everybody. Tony Cardenas' work on the RPS program and trying to stop Big Hydro. We made tremendous leadership. We've seen Eric Garcetti and my motion brought forward on lead, so we use recycling in our buildings in the city of LA. And of course, in Mayor Villarosa's comments as mayor in his inauguration, where he said "Los Angeles will become the greenest city in America." We have made tremendous strides in Los Angeles to be an environmentally friendly, sensitive city, but one problem has not been dealt with, and that is our trash. What we have in Renew LA is, I believe, the solution to that. But today before you is an encapsulation of the energy of Renew LA and an idea of environmental stewardship. stewardship on the whole issue. It is a statement that says we will become a landfill-free city, that we will encourage recycling and reuse, that we will find better ways to use our trash to create good products for society rather than denigrating our communities. It is a policy statement that says we are going to follow the great leadership we've had on water, we are going to follow the great leadership we have had as a council on dealing with our air, and we're also going to extend it to the one dirty little problem no one wants to deal with, and that's trash. And so I ask you today to support this concept as a policy statement and allow those additional eight motions that are still in our policy committees, Mr. Reyes's committee, my committee, Ms. Perry's committee, Mr. Park's committee, to continue to go forward to bring specifics to the city council, that we are adopting a policy statement today that will work with SWRPP, work with our sanitation department as we move forward in the city, and a strong statement that we will be environmentally friendly as we deal with our trash, as well as our air, as well as our water. And so with that, I ask your support. It is a policy statement that needs to be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Mr. Padilla, to be followed by Mr. Reyes. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President, and like I'm sure many of us will do again today, want to commend Councilmember Smith for his leadership and his hard work on this particular issue. But Mr. Smith, there's only one thing I disagree with in your comments. This is not the dirty little issue of trash and where we put our waste. It's a dirty, big issue of trash and where we put our waste. As you so well articulated, various members of the council, along with the mayor, have talked about the environment and our need to preserve our environment for future generations. And, you know, air quality has its day, water quality has had its day, but we haven't paid sufficient enough attention to this. And I know by having sort of supported you, worked with you in committee in our offices, and having met with constituents and other groups that are concerned about the future of Sunshine Canyon and landfills in general, the biggest, toughest question we ask ourselves is, okay, if not sunshine, then what? If not landfilling, then what? And it's tough to responsibly come forward and say, no to this, no to that, no to this, no to that, if we don't take it upon ourselves to offer alternatives, to offer alternate solutions. And that's exactly what this framework is. The item that's before us today, colleagues, may not solve the problem from today to tomorrow, from this week to next, but it puts us on an aggressive, get realistic course to responsibly reduce and dispose what we can't recycle and reuse of our waste. And I can't emphasize enough how much we should all commend Greg Smith for taking on the least glamorous of issues, but one that's so critical to the functioning of any city and particularly the second-largest city in America. So Greg, I'm proud to be a supporter of your Renew LA plan, and again, kudos to you and your staff for putting this together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. If you don't mind, real quick, Mr. Reyes, if we can spend this into item 18 and 19 were called special for cards that aren't there, so we're just going to pass those real quick. If we can take up 18 and 19, please open the roll. Sorry. Wait a second. 18 and 19, if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, then we'll return to this. Mr. Reyes, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I too rise to congratulate my colleague for such a comprehensive approach to so many issues that deals with this big problem. But I also know that as we look at these remedies, we have to understand that we need to address many of the inequities that are inherent in how the city has evolved. So as we look at the general plan, as we look at the zoning patterns, as we look at those issues where are essentially more profound in some than in others, that we look at this as an opportunity to address those inequities. So when you look at lifestyles, when you look at the propensity of apartments, what services we don't have for multi-unit facilities, how do we address those challenges? In some of our districts, it's become a sub-economy to have people walk around with carts, go into recycling centers, spilling out trash. It's become part of a lifestyle to have contractors come in from other cities, from other neighborhoods, and dump in certain districts, in certain corners, and it's been allowed to happen. We don't have the security, we don't have the management plan, we don't have the personnel to also address the needs and values of quality of life of those areas that we unfortunately did not pay attention to over the decades. And this, I believe, allows us through Councilmember Smith's stewardship to address these inequities. That's why I hope as we go through the verbal motion that was seconded on the day we introduced this concept, that the planning department, through my committee, as well as natural resources and economic, the other committees, that we look at these issues so we can equally address some of these inconsistencies. So I thank Councilmember Smith for giving us that opportunity to look at those imbalances and literally start talking about how we can provide a quality of life for everyone throughout the city. So thank you, Councilmember Smith, for that opportunity, and let's keep that in focus as we make these adjustments, given how the city has evolved in an imbalanced land use pattern. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
The President was talking to me. Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just really rise in support of this concept, as you call it, and I appreciate your leadership on this issue. The fact that, you know, we could have a management blueprint for, you know, managing our resources, our waste resources, for the next 20 years is critical. And it's the first time that we've ever really had a blueprint to talk about how we deal with our trash. And when AB 939 was passed by the state, it did, it mandated, because no one was thinking about where we were putting this trash. And the statistic that always floored me was that LA County generated enough trash to fill the Colosseum every nine days. I mean, that is a visual that I think everyone should really pay attention to. And you think that, you know, and that was a lot of years ago when that statistic came forward. But as you know, I worked in the waste management industry, and I was, it was my job to teach cities how to recycle in the early 90s, because people did not know how to recycle. Municipalities did not know how to recycle. Curbside recycling was a concept that no one had heard of. So this is really an important concept. And I know we have to think about the bottom line, and I know we have to think about how much money it will cost not to send our trash to the landfill. But, you know, we really need to pay attention, long-term, how we're going to manage our trash. And I'll tell you, I am still shocked that there are places where we're not recycling. I am shocked that multifamily units are still not recycling. I was shocked, and I'm going to bring it up to the harbor department. I was down at the harbor over the weekend, just kind of walking around, and whether it was the Marina or other places, or Porzakal Restaurant, or, I mean, the Porzakal area, we still don't allow people to recycle in easy, I mean, there's still low-hanging fruit in terms of our trash, that that kind of stuff should not be sent to the landfill. It's just criminal to send recyclables to the landfill. And until the day that Los Angeles puts more of their recycling in the big bins and less of it in their trash bins, then we're not where we need to be. And I think your leadership in this will really get us there. So I do support this concept, and I appreciate your comments to all of us, who are doing what we can in our own areas to be better stewards of our land, our air, and our water. I think that's incumbent on all of us to take that seriously, and I really appreciate your leadership, and I support what you've been doing wholeheartedly. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Greg Smith, for Renew LA and the considerable work that went into it. You know, we have been lucky, and I know Mr. Smith has visited Europe, and in some of our travels around here where we get ideas from other parts of the world and around this country, I want to share a couple snapshots. This summer, I was in Lebanon and Beirut, creating a new sister-city relationship between Beirut and Los Angeles. And Beirut, when the council members there in their chambers turned to me and said, our landfill is about at capacity, and we don't know what we're going to do with our trash, but we're recycling tires into our asphalt, and we're doing some interesting things. And I said, well, we do this with our recycling. We began to share stories about what they do and what we do differently. In Sweden, in a town in which every home has thermal heating on the floor that's generated from the scraps of green waste of food in their kitchens, and everybody scrapes those scraps into a bin that gets picked up, and then suddenly, in the coldest parts of Sweden, there is regular thermal heat in all the homes in a central system in the city. In Japan, where we have tremendous energy, and there's a great article today about Japan weaning itself off of oil and going to alternative energy, and they use trash as a source of that energy and a way of getting away from the dependence on foreign oil, we see a vision of the future. And many times, we lead it. Our Bureau of Sanitation and others are right at the forefront of leading that vision of the future. But it is time for all of us to say across the board that not only can we lead, that we will lead, and that means in each one of these categories, in each area, we can indeed reduce what we are using as human beings. Mr. Reyes did great work with the plastic bag industry and trying to get the simplest things done by training those folks at our checkout stands, not to put two cans of soup in a plastic bag and hand it to you, but put five or six that can carry more instead of using so much. We look at reusing some of those very same bags or other things so we don't keep wasting so much, and then ultimately, at recycling, what we can't reduce in our use, what we can't ourselves reuse in our use, let's recycle that. And Mr. Smith leads the way here in one of the most impressive policy documents I've seen in my time here, which actually shows, building on what Bureau of Sanitation knows as well as anybody else, what we can do with our green waste in terms of expanding that in our food waste, what we put in our, with our plastic bags, how we can grow these industries. Because, ladies and gentlemen, it is up for grabs right now where in the United States the Silicon Valley of energy technology and green industries will be. We've got Massachusetts and Michigan and Northern California, and everybody giving tax breaks. We're talking about it. Funds of investment are going that way, dollars are flowing that way. LA should not only be the leader because it's good for our health, it's good for our economy, and that's what Mr. Smith has been able to focus on. I know there is tremendous fear out there. There's fear in this horseshoe. I'm scared. This is uncharted territory, but it is the call of leadership, whether that means leadership in a bureau, whether it means leadership in a council, whether that means leadership in the community, or that means fiscally sound ways of moving forward, that leadership is about confronting those fears and marching forward nevertheless. Let's take that march forward today. Let's endorse Renew, and let's use that as the green print for moving forward in something that's good for growing jobs here in Los Angeles and ultimately being the environmental stewards that is part of our destiny. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Madam President. Eric Garcetti, Council President, I have no fear because Councilmember Smith is near to solve the problem. Bob Barker. Everything is fine with Zine and Smith, right? In all seriousness, Greg and his office have spent, I don't know how many hours, putting this together. I know that the folks from Granada Hills, Northridge, where I used to live up in that part of the valley with the winds and the trash and this and that, you've devoted many, many hours, not only as a council member, but when you were the chief of staff to Councilmember Helen Burnson, to come up with a solution. And when we look at Los Angeles, it's changing. There are no more pits where we can throw trash. Recently coming back from areas north of Vegas, they've got 18-wheelers traveling out. They've got a lot of territory out in Vegas where they're dumping trash, as we used to do for many, many years. We need to come up with a new plan. We need to come up with something with a 21st century so we can still live in a comfortable survivor, surviving in a comfortable environment. When it comes to people who look at the storm drains as a trash receptacle, many, many people think that storm drains a trash receptacle. That ends up in the ocean. It's part education. As mentioned earlier about the apartments, the commercial dwellings, they don't recycle. They throw it in the big dumpster, it goes into the landfill. So Councilmember Smith, with your program, which obviously this entire council supports, which I'm sure the mayor supports, the people of Los Angeles support, it's been a long time in coming, but as the pioneers of Los Angeles never dreamed that we would have this type of dilemma where we'd run out of space, we've run out of space. And I still remember what happened in New York City, where they had their trash on a barge, and that barge floated around for a long time. I don't know where they finally dumped it, but you look at an area like New York, where they don't have the opportunities that we have with the available space we have. And I've seen some concepts of recycling, some are realistic, some are not realistic, but I want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Smith, who's really been the leader of this, to try and come up with something that's going to help the communities, help Los Angeles. And we've got a plan for the future. We're not going to leave the map of Los Angeles. We know the glaciers are now falling apart. We know that the earth is warming more and more, and we know the trash is continuing to pile, and we need to come up with a plan. So whatever plan you have, Greg, I'm fully committed to and support. I know that, again, you have spent personally many, many hours, you've traveled around the world to find out what technology they have, and we know the technology is there. We just need to have the intestinal fortitude to come up and put that into place for everyone in Los Angeles. So congratulations, you got my support, and I think the people of the North Valley will be very appreciative and supportive, along with all of Los Angeles. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I went in the back to greet some people who were visiting our chambers there. They were from Salem, Massachusetts. I asked them where they do their trash, and they said New Hampshire, you know, so, and I greeted them, but they also told me they are working on recycling and as well as trash to energy. And isn't it interesting with our challenge that we have with the parts of land which is now used as a garden in South Los Angeles? That was the original site selected for the Lancer program, I believe under Tom Bradley administration, for trash to energy, and then it was flipped to the harbor department, and then the lawsuit came in to say you have to give the land back to the original owner because you didn't build what you intended to do. But here we're talking about trash to energy. Look at San Fernando Road in Duran, right next to the city of Glendale, right next to the Los Angeles River. All those trucks that have to drive the freeways from our neighborhoods could go to a location and work with the power of water and power. And look at that location as a possibility. There's a recycling center there now. But each of us should try to find a spot in our parts of the city to try to help this effort move forward, because it is about recycling. I would ask one thing, too. I also thought that Lancer would have got built if they took all the community activists down and gave them a three-day trip to somewhere in the world where there is trash to energy, like in Japan, like in France, like in Germany, and see it mixed within neighborhoods. It's not a concept that is just new and just happening. It's been happening for a long time. And even here on the West Coast, in the city of Spokane, which is a beautiful city in eastern Washington, this summer when I was in that region of the country, I did look at that facility, and it does blend in. But that's our challenge. And you know, Rita and everybody over there, nothing happens until we make it happen. Nothing happens till Tom Bradley and John Ferraro and Del Biaggi and everybody else, Maureen Kendall, got out to Revere Street and Tyburn, and that was then the 4th District. Now it's the 13th. It started the yellow bin recycling program. Nothing happens till we start making it happen. So we got to start making it happen. And I think this is a way, but we should pick it out. And also, as Ms. Hahn said, it is disappointing when you go and you see other regions not recycling. We all should do it, just like water. You know, water was the only city on meters in Los Angeles for many, many years. Now they're trying to meter the whole state. It's important we all recycle, reuse, and I thank you so much, Mr. Smith. So I stand to commend and support you and work with you in any way possible and deal with the issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Cardenas.
I wasn't going to speak on this item. I've talked to Greg Smith, and I know the work that he's been doing, and literally in his office, throughout the city, throughout the valley, and throughout the world, trying to educate the city of Los Angeles and create a final roadmap as to where we're going to go with all of our refuse and our trash, and how we can reduce it, and how we can be a better steward as a city on that issue. But I do need to speak because I think that all of the appropriate attention and direction to Greg Smith is probably going to be criticized tomorrow in the press, because they're probably going to say, there goes the city council, saying a bunch of nice things about one of their colleagues, yet they haven't done anything. Let me just point out, we're in the middle of a process that generations of politicians have talked about in this city. And I think the reason why we should have something good to say about Greg Smith is because it wasn't Reyes, it wasn't Cardenas, it wasn't Zine, it wasn't Hahn, it was Greg Smith who said, I want to chair this ad hoc committee. I want to take this issue on. I want to make this issue work. I want to take it to the next level where it needs to go. That's why we're saying things about Greg Smith, because Greg Smith knows that the work isn't done, right, Greg? We're just at the beginning. And maybe some of the information that you've retrieved and the things that you've seen gives you a lot of hope, and maybe some of the things you've seen makes you say, I wish it were better, I wish it were cheaper, I wish we could do it here in Los Angeles. We might not. So my, the point of what I'd like to-
So my, the point of what I'd like to say is, today is a very important day for the people of Los Angeles to at least know that this city council is serious about this issue, that this representative of the San Fernando Valley decided that he's going to make sure that this issue makes great progress, and that this city holds its own feet to the fire to make sure that we do have a blueprint, which is going to cost money. It may cost somebody elect, someone their election, it may cost someone to say things in a campaign that they can't keep promises, but that's not coming out of Greg Smith, that's not coming out of the city council. What we're doing here today is talking about a policy, a policy that is going to be in place, actions that are going to take place subsequent to today, actions that are going to hold us as elected officials accountable, hold staff, the bureaucracy accountable, hold the people of Los Angeles accountable. That's what we're talking about here today. And I, I think that today is not a day to criticize the city council. I think today is a day to reflect on previous representatives in this city at every level, both staff and otherwise and electeds, and say, you know what? Today is a day of hope. We hope that this city council is not a council of rhetoric, but this city council is a council of action. I think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, and I will be very brief, because everyone has said a lot in accolades for, for Mr. Smith. And I often say that I grew up very close to the Sunshine Canyon and those locations, and no one was thinking outside the box then, it was just our options. And when you look at the, the maps, I think that you provided to us, and where most of the, whether it be the distribution centers or the dumps, it's in, it's in the valley and it's in your district and Mr. Cardenas' district and my district as to those areas that have had some of the biggest challenges. So I just want to stand up too and say that a lot of times, we are criticized for not having vision, thinking outside our time in which we may be in council or what we're going to do, and you have demonstrated that it is critically important for us to, to look, whether it be just next year, or five years, or 10 years down the road, and what we need to be able to do, and Renew L.A. does that, because it is a city that is, is growing, and we're going to have to be able to look at alternative ways in which to not only reduce our trash, but to distribute our trash to other locations. So I will not go on other than to thank you, Greg, and to thank my colleagues, those that have been on the Renew L.A. committee. And this is not an easy subject. The solutions are not easy, they're not cheap, and so that it takes someone, I think with your leadership, Greg, to look at those variety of things that we can do and to stand up, and just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I know we have three and 15. Do I take three up next? Or take them together? Might be, okay.
And on three, there are two reports that are submitting without recommendation, the recommendations of the Board of Public Works, and an additional motion has been introduced on that item.
Okay, and, and Madam Clerk, our public hearing on those two items, have they been held?
They've been held in committee.
Okay, we do have, for members' information, we have one person out in Van Nuys. Two, three, four, five. We have 10 cards on number three. On item number 15, we have an additional eight cards. Of course, we require a motion to open, reopen, public hearing on that.
Ms. President, I presume that most of the speakers on 15 are the same speakers on, on number three, and maybe we could combine and ask them to speak on both issues at the same time to save time.
Okay.
And therefore, I'd move a 10, we got 10 speakers.
There's 10 cards on three, I'll see if they overlap, but, yeah, you want to move for 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
So any objection, callers?
With a little attitude.
Okay, all right. So let's go out to the valley first, if we can go to our remote facilities with the assistance of our Information Technology Agency, Meg Volk, out in, in Van Nuys. Ms. Volk.
Hi, I am Meg Volk. I live in Granada Hills, very close to Sunshine Canyon landfill. Thank you for letting me speak. Members of the council, we, as you all have said, cannot continue to create trash and bury the toxins without thought for the local residents and future generations. BFI cannot continue to reap profits for here and now without any concern for the irreparable damage they're causing. The quality of our water, our air, and our very lives is worth so much more than BFI has the heart to see. We have not forgotten the promises of council members and Mayor Villagrosa not to renew the five-year contract with BFI and not to allow city trash in Sunshine Canyon. It is time to use alternatives that create, create energy and recycle energy. The earth has finite resources and vanishing land. The population grows as the precious resources diminish. We have a moral and ethical responsibility to utilize current methods of trash recycling to ensure that our grandchildren and theirs have clean air and water and can breathe without concern for their safety. There are a handful of local residents who have been fighting the landfill issue, not only in Granada Hills, but in Lopez Canyon and Valverde, because they do care about what is right. They have kept this vigilant watch for more than two decades, and I applaud them for their tireless commitment and dedication. It is time to stand up for what is right and not for what is convenient or cheaper at the moment. We believed in your promises, we believed in you. Are you going to fail us now? Will you be held captive by a business relationship with BFI that is based on threats and intimidation? Will you continue to lie to us? Will you make a stand to do what is right? The choice is yours. Do what you promised is right for the people for whom you swore to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Candido Maras.
Thank you, Gruel. Mr. President, I'm wearing my button, and it says, L.A.'s my town, L.A.'s your town, L.A.'s everybody's town. And today, the trash became all of ours. And no longer, hopefully, will we just see the North Valley have to suffer with the landfill. It's time to end the landfill. And Mr. Smith, I'm so proud to live in your district. And Mr. Cardenas, you're right, this council should be very, very proud of themselves. You did a great thing today. I've been here since 1991, and I've seen this contract come before, the council before. I hope you do the right thing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Becky Bendixson, followed by Ann Ziliak.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Becky Bendixson. I'm a resident of the northern part of Granada Hills for the past 15 and a half years. The community was promised the landfill would be closed in 1991. Since I have lived at my current residence, as the crow flies, used to fly over the two miles from the landfill, on a street which contains 11 homes, it's become known to me that there are eight cancer cases. Two of the cancer patients have moved away from the area. This is just one street, there are others with similar stories. I know those of you council members who have been in these chambers for many years have heard the community provide testimony about our concerns for the safety of the water supply and the health of the residents of the city and county. Some of those who are new may not be aware of the dangers of living so close to this landfill. During the last mayoral race, Granada Hills North Neighbor Council, of which I will have been a board member for the past three years as of the end of March, requested the candidates complete a questionnaire. On page three of that questionnaire, our current mayor, Villagrosa, responded to our questions related to Sunshine Canyon landfill in January 2005 as follows. Number one, will you renew the BFI contract for residential trash in 2006? No. If no to the above question, and it reaches your desk, will you veto it? Yes. When the city contract expires in 2006, arrange to take trash taken to destinations away from the populated areas and sensitive water facilities? Yes. Set a goal of price leveling so that MRF's material recovery facilities can compete economically with lower landfill costs? Yes. Base the city franchise fee on only the tonnage that has not been merfed, recycled, or converted? Yes. Construct at least one conversion facility in each of the city's five waste sheds? Yes. The Bureau of Sanitation was, number seven, the Bureau of Sanitation was ordered in 1999 to implement a recycling program for apartments and multifamily facilities. This still has not been completed. Would you commit to its, to its full and timely implementation? Yes. There are no clarifications as to his answers on these questions, which were promises to our community. We've been to enough city council and committee meetings to have heard over and over again, yes, it's a terrible thing to do to the persons who live and work in the valley, but we just can't afford another option. The persons who govern the residents of the city and county appear to have no problem building the most expensive school in the U.S., Belmont, and now we hear the next high school downtown will be even more expensive than Belmont. Apparently, there is enough money for the Grand Avenue project, tax concessions to assist a billionaire for an elaborate project near the convention center. Whatever hat has been used to pull these expensive rabbits out, I'm sure you can pull one more out to stop using Sunshine Canyon landfill. I ask that you do the right thing. Stop dumping all your trash on us. Listen to Councilman Smith's ideas and support him by voting as he does to protect millions of persons from the effects of this landfill. Thank you. I'd like to put into the record the questionnaire that the mayor filled out.
Thank you. We'll make sure the Sergeant-at-Arms gets that. We have four minutes left and nine cards. There's some overlap, Mr. Smith, but there's nine other speakers. I'll just continue with them. Ann Ziliak, we give people two minutes, but just to remind folks, the more, the shorter you are, the more people will speak. Wade Hunter will be our next.
Okay, thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and I would like to thank Mr. Cardenas for his statement. I really think that was a great statement you made. And Councilman Smith, we've been working on this issue forever, and I want to say that how many years ago, I was here asking you not to go with BFI, not to give the expansion. And I, I do have some issues with the Bureau of Sanitation report. I didn't necessarily agree with the outcome of it. However, it is what it is. And I just plead with you to not do this contract with BFI, because we need to start thinking about the future, and this cannot be our legacy. We really appreciate anybody that understands what we're going through. All these other landfills, they have similar problems, and we try and work hard with them to eliminate those and help them. And I would appreciate it if you would just please not vote for BFI. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Hunter. And Ralph Kroy will be next.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Wade Hunter and the president of the North Valley Coalition. First, I'd like to tell you that I attended the Renew L.A. ad hoc committees, budget and finance, energy and environment committees, and I have raised an issue that the numbers provided in sanitation's report are not correct. Apart from the other bidders, whose complaints were that their bids were misrepresented, BFI's bid as presented is also not correct. The $29 million per year, $157 million per five years fails to account for the fact that you had passed an ordinance under the Renew L.A. that will reduce the tonnage that you can send to Sunshine over a five-year period. Starting this year, you must reduce that tonnage by between 600 to 800 tons per day. Then the next year, 1,000, another 1,000, the following year, and finally, 500, so there's only 500 tons per day left. And what I am saying to you is, therefore, you must reduce the $29 million per year by the corresponding reduction in the tonnage. And what you have to add to that cost is either disposal at some conversion technology rate or at some $45 per ton gate rate. So, you know, that's, of course, if BFI would allow you to even split the waste shed and go to some other landfill. Again, you have to address this problem, because what you're looking at is not viable. Sanitation was also instructed by all the committees to address the issues raised. I've spent at least 20 minutes explaining to sanitation why this adjustment needs to be done. Sanitation has failed to provide this information to you. The question is why? BFI is also failing to, the turnaround city vehicles, and it's costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. They can't even honor the simple clause in the current contract, and how can you trust them in the future? The proposed contract, as written, will also limit your options for splitting the waste sheds. Also, I'd like to talk about our Renew L.A. You've made a commitment to Renew L.A. Ms. Suva Devandry is willing to give me her time. Thank you.
Okay.
The Renew L.A. program and to us. To accept BFI's bid is to reneg on this commitment. The mayor had also promised us during his campaign that he was not going to renew the Sunshine Canyon contract, and he was going to do everything he would. And I'd like to pass this up. This is a letter I received from the mayor. Can I get somebody to distribute this, please?
Thank you. We'll make sure the Sergeant-at-Arms gets that. I just want to say, as you're taking--
Okay, I'll, I'll continue on, but what I wanted to tell you--
We can just pause the timer for one, one moment. We, we actually are about six seconds away from the move for 10 minutes of public comment. You asked for somebody's time who is behind Mr. Kroy, so it's actually Mr. Kroy's time. I want to make sure that we respect that or at least extend the time.
Okay, Mr. Kroy will also give me his time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kroy. Okay. The mayor did make a promise to us, and he met with the North Valley Coalition, and indeed, he wrote a letter to us, and he promised in that letter, which he himself released the press, that he, given a feasible alternative to Sunshine, would approve it. And I quote, and this is on page two, paragraph one of the August 4, 2005 letter. "I made my commitment to you that I would not support this extension based on the knowledge that the Bureau of Sanitation's request for proposal process had invoked a feasible disposable alternative to landfilling our city's solid waste at Sunshine. Even though the alternative is proposed by Waste Management to use transfer stations to remote landfills would have cost the city of Los Angeles an additional $9 to $16 million in annual fees, and then it's as brackets, depending on which of the submitted options the council selected, I was prepared to support those options so that we could get out of Sunshine." So I think what the mayor is telling us is, he's willing to go $9 to $16 million more if he needs to, to get us out of Sunshine. And so I believe that we have been presented those options today, and that a contract with BFI is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public comment right now, unless there's a move to extend it. We also--
May I submit mine to the record, please?
Sorry?
May I submit my comments to the record?
Absolutely, yes. We'll make sure Sergeant Arms has those, and we will all take a look at those. We do have some comments that are on a different side potentially, or on general comments. So I'd like to call forward Brendan Huffman on the fore side, if he is here, and to make sure that we have hearing of both. Mr. Huffman, going once, twice? Nope. Doug Corcoran? Is he here?
No.
And then Jennifer Narad. We'll have two minutes each for those.
Caught me by surprise back there, I was talking to somebody else. Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. My name is Doug Corcoran.
Excuse me, Ms. Corcoran. Yes, Ms. Padilla? Can you hold the timer?
Sorry to interrupt, but I think, Mr. President, this is what I was referring to earlier when I said some of the other applicants or bidders, if you will, I think deserve, for, for our sake, a little bit more time, so we can accurately hear how--
All right, would you move a specific amount of time, Ms. Padilla?
Instead of, what, are we giving them two minutes?
We didn't do two, yeah. We could do five or--
Yeah, at least four or five minutes.
Okay. And is Jennifer, Jennifer Narad--
There's only a couple of them, right?
I don't, I'm not sure, because it just says general comment, so Jennifer Narad, is that, is this, what side, what's your perspective, if you will, for it as well? Okay, all right, so as, as a alternative holler, or what's, I'm trying to make, see if you're in line with what Mr. Padilla is, is trying to move to allow some of the folks who are proposing alternate solutions. I want to keep that as defined as possible. Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Corcoran, with five minutes, and we'll, we'll talk to you, Ms. Narad, and get a sense of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With the RFP that is today's subject, the city has created an opportunity to take a bold step on the path to its stated goal of becoming a landfill-free city. What happens with regard to this RFP will speak volumes as to whether or not that stated goal will lead to action or it'll be just words. We at Waste Management have presented a viable and realistic proposal that, if chosen, will get us all started towards the long-range goals of Renew L.A., will introduce healthy competition to the disposal solution for Los Angeles, and is clearly affordable. And yet, we have some serious concerns about the process that has been undertaken to evaluate our proposal. our proposal. First of all, before I go any further on that, I do want to say that 90% of the time, I really love working with staff. We get along good. I think they do a great job. On this issue, we are not agreeing. It just feels to me like they're gripped with a sense of inertia that makes them fall back into the status quo over and over again. Got RFP 1, RFP 2, now we're here at RFP 3. I feel like a character on Gilligan's Island that we run around, and at the end of the day, we're all right back where we started. We think it's time to get off the island. Now, as most of you know, earlier this week, we sent a letter to Director Robinson expressing our disappointment and frustration with the direction of and the assumptions contained within the Bureau's evaluation of the proposals. The letter consolidates issues that we've been raising with the Bureau since RFP 1, and we're still frustrated that we don't feel that the concerns have been adequately addressed either in reports or at committee meetings. And so I'd like to present some of those issues in summary form here today. The first category of issues we're concerned about is some of the assumptions that we feel were, I guess, unrealistic assumptions that bias the review of this proposal, of our proposal, towards maintaining the status quo. The first of that pertains to the Sunshine Canyon landfill charging gate rate if they don't get every single ton that they're getting currently. We just think that's unrealistic in our business. It is just a standard practice. The biggest customers get the best pricing, period. We were frustrated that in RFP 3, there is a phrase that says there will be concurrent negotiations with Sunshine Canyon landfill. We don't believe that's happened. We didn't see anything in the staff report, nothing in the committee presentations. And there's a quote I'd like to read from the Daily News that came from our friends up there at Sunshine Canyon, which also reinforce our feeling that there has been no negotiations. And it reads like this. "During recent meetings, other waste companies and some city officials made comments concerning the possibility of BFI offering or being willing to offer reduced pricing. The city should make no such assumption." That's great. To me, I mean, that's coming from the guys running this show right now because everybody's wondering what's going to happen, and the lion's share of the gap between the proposals and the current situation rests in the assumption that the gate rate at Sunshine is going to be the rate the city is stuck with for anything that goes in there after something like this. If there's ever been a situation that just screams for competition, we believe this is it. We feel that there are a lot of operational savings, and I'm running short on time. So the letter that I wrote does outline those operational savings. We think there are efficiencies to be gained by taking the transfer rigs out of Sunshine Canyon that will be felt in the valley routes and will be, if you add them all up, we've calculated approximately $2 million a year. So I have an alternative for you to consider, and hopefully, some folks will be able to get back in there and start to hammer something out with Sunshine. But if we were in the situation where Waste Management was chosen for the waste sheds that we proposed for, which is north-central, south LA, and harbor, and the valley and western waste sheds continued to go into Sunshine Canyon, and if they charged, if they were able to raise their rate to match the rate that we've offered at $28 a ton, and you take into account the savings in operational efficiencies that are real, and in our company, we definitely would be expecting to achieve those rates, you're looking at a gap of about $2.6 million between current and that situation. And I mean, they'd be in the game at $28, about the same spot that we've bid. That basically equates to about $3.55 a year for the 740,000 rate payers and about 30 cents a month. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For two minutes, Jennifer Narad, if you'd like to come forward. Then I will make sure I read the other names into the record.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Narad. I'm a resident of Los Angeles and a former resident of the San Fernando Valley. You know, I think I'm speaking on all the issues. I'm really excited about Renew LA to know that recycling is going to become viable in Los Angeles. So thank you, Councilman Smith. And also on three, that I think we should keep Sunshine landfill, but for the five years, so that's actually going into the 15, item number 15. I've been following the progress through the press, and what I get is that everyone is really committed to what's best for them, for best for the environment and best for the community. I get that the Granada Hills community doesn't want the dump anymore. You know, they see it as being something dirty. It decreases property value. There's a lot of pollution with the trucks. It's toxic. It's stinky. All those bad things. I get that for the greater Los Angeles community that, and the council members are looking at being accountable for implementing programs that are beneficial to us residents, that are fiscally viable. And then I get that something needs to be done, and I get right now that we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Right now, it is so. Councilwoman Hahn suggested that, you know, with the trash we consume in LA, that we can fill the Coliseum every nine days. If we don't use Sunshine landfill, there's still going to be trash deposited there. There's still going to be trucks going there. And while I'm really excited about Renew LA, it's going to take some time to implement that program and get it going. The money that we're going to send out to transfer our trash to other places, about $14 million a year is what I understand, that comes to $70 million in five years. And I want people to consider what's possible, possible that would be beneficial for everyone and to promote the programs that Councilman Smith has suggested and that all of you voted for. And to keep Sunshine landfill for the five years and until those programs are implemented.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm sorry we did not have time to go to, get to Ralph Kroy, Iris Bancroft, and also Cheryl Mann. That closes public comment on those items. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's probably time to bring the staff for it because we're going to get into that in just a moment. But first of all, I want to say I felt like I was at my own wake a minute ago. I appreciate all the good comments. It was very nice, but I don't want to get used to it. Yeah, don't get used to it. I understand. I understand. Well, first of all, we're here today to look at what the council ordered last summer in RFP number three. And we said as a council that we didn't want to extend the contract last summer, that we wanted our staff to go out and find a better way to deal with our trash that did not include Sunshine Canyon. I also want to commend the staff that they did what we asked them to do, and they've brought back to us today a number of options. I want to caution you, though. Last summer, we were told it was going to cost $30 million to do this. Don't do it. And today, their recommendations come back, their best one, $14 million, half of what they told us last year. But in reality, that is a worst-case scenario, and they're the first ones to admit it if you ask them that. That's the worst-case scenario, and that is that BFI does not negotiate with us, does not talk to us, and gives the highest rate that they're giving anybody in the city of LA or the region. And in reality, in best-case scenarios, if we work with BFI and can get that better price, it gets down to $6 million, one-third or more of what they told us last summer. And so we also were concerned in this council last year that we want to make sure that we had more than just one vendor to deal with our trash, that we had options out, that we had flexibility as a city. One thing we have been lacking around here for decades is alternatives. What would happen if BFI was closed? We know on a daily basis, when they're closed with high winds and rains, it costs us a lot of money to divert to other resources. And so we wanted to make sure as a city we had other options. We asked them to write that RFP in a way that would open it up as much as possible so we get as many choices as possible. And that's part of what you have before you today. And so I think it was a very successful effort, RFP 3, that it allowed us to look at options. And what we got out of it were not just options before you today, but potential vendors in the future, because there are some really interesting things that came back to us in that RFP that gives us hope for the future as well as today. And so we're going to be looking at those things today. But the most important thing is that not one official representing the city of Los Angeles, from the Board of Public Works, from the city council, from the mayor, from any source, has sat down and talked to BFI to understand what their position really is. And so today, we're going to look at that as well. And finally, I want to remind you to keep this in mind, that last summer, this council voted to put a restriction on what we are sending to BFI and reduce it over five years. That was part of the Renew LA plan. It was part of the plan brought forward by Mr. Cardenas and other members, saying we want to gradually get out of BFI over the next five years. And that is the overarching policy that we must keep in mind as we deal with this item today. Over the past week and a half, my staff has worked late into the night, often with Sharon So of the CLA's office, and I want to commend her. They were here with the sanitation bureau till 9:30 last week and till 8:30 last night, and Sharon and the CLA have done a tremendous job in analyzing number A and number B, which is a sanitation report, and trying to find if there's a better way to tweak that for our advantage as a city. And so in an effort to put on the table more options than just the two brought forward by sanitation, we have been bringing out now the CLA's recommendations, which include options C, D, and E, which are three other options we can look at as we mix our trash to find a way to get a better rate and a better cost factor for us to deal with our trash. You will see within those options that we've actually been able to reduce, in the best-case scenario, the whole cost downwards to $4 million. $4 million. And I want to commend again Jerry Miller and Sharon So. They've done a magnificent job. To help in that effort, and I'm going to give this to the CLA right now, I have a 50% discount coupon from BFI for trash. And so I'm a coupon collector. I'm going to give it to you so we can use it when we negotiate with BFI. It's 50% off our trash at BFI. Take care of that. Now, some have asked, why should we do this at all? Why should we spend the money? I think that is a tremendous question, and it is the essential question that we have to answer today. And I can only say to you in this regard, this council has never cowered from the challenges that we've been presented, to do the best thing for the city of LA, not just always the cheapest way for the city of LA. We are committed to Ms. Hahn's effort in the harbor, to clean our harbor up. We're doing that not because it is the cheapest thing to do. We're not doing it because it is the easiest thing to do. We're doing it because it is the right thing to do. It is not just for a few people in the harbor. It is for all of Los Angeles. We are committed to Mr. Reyes's LA River Project, not because it is the cheapest thing to do, not because it is an easy thing to do. It is not, but it is the right thing to do for Los Angeles. It only impacts a small part of our city, but it is a benefit to our city to create a project that is environmentally sensitive, environmentally sound, and we can be proud of. We committed to Mr. Cardenas and others on the RPS project to create 20% of our energy from green sources, not because it is the cheap thing to do, but because it is the right thing to do. Unfortunately, previous generations of civic leaders in the city of LA have failed to make the serious commitment to us to get out of dumps. It has been easier historically for the city just to move from one dump to the other. We closed Toyon Canyon in Mr. Labonge's district because the community didn't want it there. It was not the cheapest thing to do. We closed Mission Canyon in Mr. Rosenau's district because the people there didn't want it, not because it was the cheapest thing to do, it was the right thing to do. We closed Lopez Canyon. I remember hearing Alex Padilla tell me that one of the very first things he did in his life to get involved in politics was to fight Lopez Canyon, and that really piqued his interest in government and politics. We closed our own landfill, Lopez Canyon, because the people there didn't want it, not because it was easy, not because it was cheap, because it was the right thing to do. We are limiting, we're taking a look at Bradley and limiting that and closing that down shortly because of community objections. Why did we take those actions? To help just certain communities of the city of LA? Because it was the right thing to do. And I remind you, those were never the cheaper options, any of them. As a citizen, I supported each and every one of those actions because I felt it was incumbent upon us to make our city a better place to live. But never did any of the previous council members from any of those districts ever come forward to this city government and give us alternative options to landfilling. They closed their dumps and moved on and forgot the rest of us. And we are here today because of the inaction of previous city councils to deal with the problem. They pushed off their problems on us today. And the question I ask you, will we do the same thing? Will we just turn our backs and push it off on the future city councils? I think I know most of you well enough to know you're not going to do that because this council has had the guts to deal with those kind of issues. Today, we're looking at Sunshine Canyon as the only option, according to the sanitation department because it is cheap. Today, I have brought to you those options that we proposed in the CLA. It's 3A, I believe it'll be option number 3A, which will be a motion to instruct the president of council. And I'm not four minutes over. I've got six minutes, right?
No, we're at, you're one and a half minutes over.
Okay. Let me just close by saying this. We've got some options on the table. There are five options to look at. They're cheaper than what we have been led to believe. We are going to look at a motion that I have to instruct the president of council to put together a delegation to go meet with BFI to see what the true costs are so we can consider that. In any, let me just read to you, if I may, a comment by President John F. Kennedy. When the United States of America was challenged in space, we were behind in the space race, he said, "We chose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard, because that goal will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills, because that challenge is one that we are willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone." We postponed this decision around here for too long, ladies and gentlemen. I say to you, let us do the right thing, not the cheap thing. Let's not follow the easy way out that has been taken by previous councils. Let's break the cycle of dependence and flawed decision-making that we've had in the past, and let us leave our mark on the city of LA on this issue, as we've already done on water and on air. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla, son of a gun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me again begin by complimenting the junior member of the Republican Caucus for acknowledging inspiration from one of the most popular Democratic presidents in this country's history. My first question is maybe for the city attorney. What is our deadline for action on this item?
I believe February 28 is the deadline of the extension granted by BFI.
Okay. And I ask that because Mr. Smith, who truly has been the leader of the city council on this issue, is asking for some time and for some more things to happen in the interim time period, and I want to support that effort, not because we're, you know, bucking off the issue yet again, but if the department has failed to live up to the direction that I believe this council had given, to negotiate extensively with not just BFI, but they haven't seemed to have done that to the level that we hoped for and other people proposing to help the city with this service, then we need to do it ourselves. And so I support Mr. Smith, both in the effort to continue and in setting up that team or delegation from the city council on behalf of the city to do that work. Again, colleagues, we have, and I sat through the discussions both in the Renew LA Committee as well as the Energy and Environment Committee. I believe what we have before us are viable options. They are realistic options. They're not pie-in-the-sky alternatives. These are real alternatives that we now get to consider, to help responsibly consider these alternatives. There is clearly, in my opinion, some pencil sharpening that needs to be done. At the end of the day, this will be a policy decision for the city council. We're going to hear that from the department over and over again. How much more money are we willing to pay, might we have to pay, if we want to take the bold action of saying we're no longer going to dump in Sunshine? I would argue there's a lot of people out there who are willing to take on an additional cost to do that. And indeed, in the mayor's own budget workshop for neighborhood councils, there was a significant percentage of neighborhood council representatives who said they were willing to take on that sort of incremental additional cost if it meant we were taking a big step in the direction of being a landfill-free city. But the numbers that we have before us, I don't believe are accurate enough, based on the assumptions that Mr. Smith has pointed out, that members of the public have pointed out, that are wrong. So in that time period, let's continue to talk and negotiate. In that time period, let's continue to really correct these numbers so that we know exactly what we're talking about and have an accurate figure for this council to consider and the public to understand. If we want to get out of Sunshine, how much more are we talking about? Is it a lot more? Is it a little more? I have a strong feeling that we're moving in the direction of it just being just a little more and being much more comfortable for this council as a body to make that bold policy decision.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I want to make sure that it's clear. We need to find the best-case scenario for every part of the city. And I understand the efforts that are being made here, but I also want to make sure that we have on the record what will happen even if we're not there. I think the worst thing that could happen is that those who are not informed, those who are not aware, will end up with a Sunshine Canyon where they're dumping anyway. Are we getting the same support from the county and other cities who would want to have the same sense of consideration for that committee by not dumping there if we leave it vacant? But it just sounds to me that there will be other businesses, there will be other entities who will want to come and dump because now they have room because we stepped away, and we're still going to have to pay more. So I just want to make sure we're making decisions that are based on the facts and it's realistic what can happen, given that we do not control that land because it's private property. So the property rights here and the discretion of a business and how they conduct their business could be sobering. But let's put all the cards on the table. Let's make decisions based on the facts, and let's come to realize that that-- let's come to realize that that landfill will be available for other entities, and they will continue to dump there. And it just sounds to me that if we don't end up in that place, they will not have the luxury or the advantage of charging even more and make more money. And maybe behooves them that we don't show up. Maybe behooves it that we do not re-establish this contract, because now they have a place to charge even more to others, and the neighborhood will still be penalized. And that's an issue that we can't control. So, again, just for the sake of clarity, I understand the intentions, the advocacy of my colleagues, but again, let's understand the opportunity costs of what will be paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Nobody else has pressed their speaker button to be heard right now, so we would need either direction on action today or some other motion.
Mr. President, there is a motion 3A before council, and that would be to request the council president to form a negotiating committee, and also for that committee to report back next week, and to instruct the city clerk to place that on the agenda, and that should be adopted before going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Colleagues, just before, I know Mr. Smith wants to say something as well, if I could just have everybody's attention. Part of the idea of scheduling this early was so folks could ask any questions they have, either of the bureau of our CLA who's been working on this, any of the companies that might be involved, for those who wanted to be here and say anything. So, this is a good time to also ask questions as we begin our thinking. Obviously, I don't think we'll take action today, but we scheduled this so that we would have about 10 days. Ideally, we could do our thinking in this next week, so that by next Friday, we might have some idea of direction. Obviously, some of that depends on whether or not conversations with our existing contractor, BFI, move forward and how those go, which is obviously the big if in the room. But that said, if there's any questions that folks want to ask right now, if they don't want to do it here, obviously, our CLA is available, the bureau is available, to have those conversations as we chew this over, but we hope that the members will take that time to ask any questions about the numbers that have been put forward to us, so that we can make our best decisions on that. Okay. Mr. Smith, did you want to say anything else?
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that the CLA report, which includes options C, D, and E, if you will, is included with the sanitation bureau report, so we have 2A, B, C, D, and E on the table, which I'll make a motion to put on the table pending the outcome of 3A and the specials.
Okay. We'll make sure those are part of the council file, let's direct that if there's no objection to attest that. There's no problem with that, Madam Clerk?
No, the clerk just needs a copy of that.
Okay. We'll make sure that's part of the council file.
Continue.
Okay. Anything else wishing, anybody else wishing to ask any questions today? We'll hear anything? Okay. If not, would you like to make those motions, the motion now?
Yes, Mr. President, I ask that we move 3A, which instructs the president council to appoint a committee to meet and negotiate with BFI, and that we hold on the desk the remaining options encompassed in 3 and 15, pending future.
Second from Ms. Hahn. If there's no objection to that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that instruction will move forward, we will hold those on the desk. Again, colleagues, so that we don't find ourselves in the same place a week from now, this week is for us to chew through those policy issues and to talk about it. We will keep you informed about any discussions that have been authorized today, and let each of the members know as much as we can about that. So, with that, let's move on to the next item.
Next item is item number seven, and that was called special by council member Hahn, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay. Ms. Hahn, number seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, what we have before us today, this item is a package of resolutions that I've introduced to oppose federal measures, which would virtually eliminate cable franchising at the city level. These measures are being sold to the American public, in my view, as a guise of giving consumers more choice when it comes to cable and video services. While I certainly endorse competition for consumers, I don't believe that these bills endorse video choice. In fact, if these bills pass, it would mean fewer residents would receive the benefits that we as a city can provide through our franchise fees. For example, in our franchise fees and agreements, we can keep track of each street and sidewalk, and we can work to ensure that the installation of new services does not cause gas leaks, electrical outages, water main breaks, and among the core police powers of local governments. I know that consumers want better programming at lower prices, but do they want potholes in their roads, water main breaks, traffic jams during rush hour as a consequence? Stricter consumer service standards that we can enforce at the city level, which is one of the most important things to our cable subscribers, is customer service. We can ensure that educational and government-access video programming. People can tune in and watch this very city council meeting because of franchise fees. This would all be reduced or eliminated. The conditions of a franchise agreement ensure service for all communities, and full access to public and educational channels, and compensation for private use of public land. We need to make our voice heard in Los Angeles, that we do not support legislation that will abolish local government authority over cable franchises. This is a very serious issue before us. I urge your support on these resolutions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
I'll actually defer to the chairman of the ITGS committee to speak first.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas, and then we'll return to Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. This is a very important issue, and thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this up and expressing to the people of Los Angeles how important this issue is. Cable franchises are negotiated with local government. Cable franchises are an opportunity for people to have access to certain information, and it's been a pretty darn good relationship, the relationship between the cable franchise companies and the city of Los Angeles. Not a perfect relationship. We just had one cable company that settled with the city of Los Angeles for about $4.5 million due to some issues that they had here in the city. But the main point that I would like to stress is, everything that I've said for the last 30 seconds has to do with your city. I don't agree that the federal government should be getting involved in taking away that franchise relationship. I don't think that the state government should get involved in taking away that franchise relationship. I also don't agree that the federal government or the state government should be getting involved in deciding what kind of services are provided to our constituents. You see, because when you run into a congressman or a senator, an assembly member, and you say, "You know, I've got problems with my street, with my light, I need a pothole fixed, I need something that I walk out of my house or drive out of my house," 99% of the time, you need to call your city government for those issues. Why? Because Sacramento is far away, Washington is far away. And unfortunately, our federal government and our state government have conveniently given a lot of responsibilities to local government. And why they would want to get involved in pulling out the rug from under our feet, so that we can pay our police officers, so we can pay our firefighters, I don't understand. But that's what's going on in Washington, and that's what's going on in Sacramento. They are making decisions as to whether or not, and I think, in my personal opinion, kind of willingly, just making decisions, not realizing the impact that they may have on us in being able to deliver our services to you. We collect tens of millions of dollars in this city in our franchise fees. The federal government just might wipe those out. The state government might wipe them out as well. Or they might get kind of cute with us and say, "No, we're going to keep the franchise fees, but we're going to send them to Sacramento, or we're going to send them to Washington, and we're going to negotiate in Washington, we're going to negotiate in Sacramento," not even knowing what the street issues are here locally. So, I agree that we should not allow them to do that, and we need to collectively use our voices as cities, as citizens, to make sure that they do not do that. There are things that we need to fix, there are new relationships with new technologies, and I think that there are plenty of opportunities for us to do that right here at home, right here in these chambers. Thank you.[1164.21][1164.21](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll apologize in advance if I go over my time, because I, as one of the former chairs of the ITGS committee, know probably more about this issue than I ever cared to. And that's why I want to rise in, well, it's a part of the resolution, but, but really implore with you colleagues that this issue is a lot bigger than most people are thinking of and talking about these days. And the reason I say that is because, as you all know, one of the other hats that I wear is serving as president of the League of California Cities. And arguably, this is one of the hottest items that the league is contending with in terms of establishing a policy position, not on these federal bills, but on the issue of proposed reforms to our telecommunications systems in general. And I have with me, and I've shared with council member Hahn and council member Cardenas, just some notes from the last board discussion, which, over a two-day period, accounted for at no less than about three hours. Yes, at the local level, we are worried about our right-of-way, and about trenching, and about street closures, and all of that. But if that's the extent of what attention and concern we're paying to this issue, we're selling ourselves way, way short. As Mr. Cardenas emphasized, franchise fees mean a lot to the city. And I think more and more, we've asked ourselves around this horseshoe, why do satellite providers not pay franchise fees to the city? There's uneven regulatory and taxation frameworks because of different technologies. And so, now we have companies like Verizon, and formerly SBC, now the new AT&amp;T, wanting to provide video service in the state of California. Should they pay us franchise fees or not? There's talk out there in legislative negotiations that they're willing to keep cities whole when it comes to franchise fees and this particular revenue stream for cities, Los Angeles being the largest. But there's so many other policy areas, revenue protection, regulatory and taxation level playing fields is a term I like to use, the right-of-way that, again, have been mentioned before, peg requirements. There are non-peg requirements that the city is able to negotiate through our franchise fees, customer service protections, redlining, 911 services, as even cable companies are getting into the phone business. That's the reverse of telecommunications companies trying to get into the video service. So, at the end of the day, I think it is a big, two big policy issues that we have to answer, take a position on. Number one, local control. There is a huge advantage to maintaining local control. The benefits that we've been able to obtain through negotiations with cable companies is because they have to get a local franchise agreement. That puts us in a position of leverage and power to negotiate something that is right for the city of Los Angeles and best serves the residents of this city, both as our constituents and as consumers. By the same token, as Ms. Hahn said, we welcome competition, and we want to help foster competition, because we know competition is good for consumers, who are, again, by the way, our constituents. And to understand how best we can facilitate competition, we need to educate ourselves to the evolution of technology, and how technology is advancing in the city of Los Angeles, throughout the country, and indeed, throughout the world. And I'm not saying these two significant policy areas necessarily contradict or are in conflict, but they are certainly much bigger than a debate over who controls who and when can cut into our sidewalks and our streets for the deployment of broadband cable. When we consider, and I know I'm going over my time, when we consider franchise renewals or transfers of ownership for cable franchise agreements, we neatly categorize our thinking in three different ways. There's the legal issues, there's the technological issues, and there's the financial issues. And we haven't even begun to brush them when it comes to the consideration of regional or statewide video franchise agreements for telecommunications companies, but I also think it opens up the discussion to cable companies as they're providing phone service. It's hot and heavy this year in the state capital. This discussion is hot and heavy this year at the federal level. What I would hope to do is work with the president of the council and the chair of the ITGS committee to bring forth comprehensive briefings to this body as to what is going on in those areas, and maybe even take a cue from the League of Cities, as they have strived to put together a framework for negotiations for us when it comes to state legislation, but also when it comes to the AT&amp;Ts, the Verizans, and the cable companies of the world coming into our city to ask for us to take certain policy positions. So, with that, again, I want to support the resolution that's before us, if for nothing else, simply because it speaks to the value of local control, local franchising authority. By us taking this position does not mean the fight's over. It means we have to be ever more vigilant at the state capital and in our nation's capital, but I wanted to use this opportunity, colleagues, to highlight to all of us how much bigger of an issue this is than just this one question.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I don't see anyone else on the queue at the moment. Colleagues, if not, this item is now before us.
And Madam President, that is the 7A with the new resolution.
7A was before us.
And just a quick question, I believe this item was heard in committee prior to coming here. Not sure if there were speaker cards under public comment for this item.
I don't see any speaker cards here on this item.
Just checking.
Okay. Thank you. So, we're, the item before us is the amendment, the 7A amendment, is that correct?
Yes, with the new resolution.
Okay.
It's the resolution with a little technical amendment.
Great. Okay. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Next item's item number 10, and that was called special by council member Smith.
Mr. Smith? And I think on that last item, they wanted it to go forthwith, I think, Ms. Hahn.
We'll do this real fast. Very simply, on item number 10, ladies and gentlemen, by Senator Spear, this was to put GPS devices on habitual high-risk sex offenders. We did that last year in the state of California in a very small test program. Out of 250 people that had these GPSs attached to their legs, 42 were rearrested and sent back to prison for violating their paroles. Senator Spear's motion will expand the program to thousands of high-risk sex offenders. These are not every sex offender released from prison, but those at the parole department believes are going to be high-risk and repeat their crimes once again. And so, we should support this. It provides more protection in our communities, and it's being paid for by the state of California. So, I ask you for support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. Next order of business, please.
Item number 12 was called special by Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Once again, just to let you know, I'm not all about trash, I'm also about sex.[1654.42][1654.42](LAUGHTER). Point of information. Trashy sex, that's what, yeah. Anyway, number 12 is asking for your support on AB 1791, Bermudas, who is a continuation of bill introduced last year and passed, which prohibits sex offenders once again from living within a quarter-mile of schools of kindergarten through eighth grade. AB 1791 will expand that to also ninth through K, excuse me, ninth through 12th grade, and we're asking for amendment to that, that will also include licensed daycare centers, so that we don't have these sex offenders living next to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Colleagues, no one else on the queue. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Madam President, items 18 and 19 were adopted previously. However, there are speaker cards on those items. Do you wish to reconsider those to hear the speakers?
Yes, I would ask that, colleagues, we vote to reconsider those items based on the cards. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration on items 18 and 19. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
This item is now being reconsidered. We have two speaker cards, that, or, excuse me, Melrose, Larry Green.
Thank you, and thank you for reconsidering. I was shocked that actually one of President Garcetti's associates came to me and told me you were reconsidering this. Thank you. Item 18 and 19 have to do with including the names of Queen Latifah and Nathan Lane on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Now, it's no secret, I'm originally from New York, but I moved to Hollywood to pursue a career in show business after having left accounting and going to talk radio, and I'm sort of on the cusp of show business, and I'm a very big fan of Queen Latifah and Nathan Lane. In fact, you may or may not know this, but to, Queen Latifah is someone I've met, she's from New Jersey, and Nathan Lane I never met, but he's one of the greatest performers, I think, on Broadway. And the reason why I'm talking about those two and not the others is because I think it would be a good idea for the city council, from time to time, to invite it would be a good idea for the city council, from time to time, to invite some of the designees of the Hollywood Walk of Fame to the city council. I know the mayor had George Lopez here, and that was a real thrill for me. But I think if you brought Queen Latifah here or Nathan Lane, you would do a lot to motivate many of the young people of all colors, all persuasions, because I think they're really -- it's great to talk about landfills. I have a master's degree in urban planning from before when many of you were born, got it from Cornell in 1974. And it's also important, though, that we remember we are in Hollywood. Hollywood's part of Los Angeles, and the more that we can do to bring those people down here, you can email me at melrose1@earthlink.net if any of you members of the council would like to know. I have all the names of all the agents and managers of Nathan Lane and Queen Latifah and 50 Cent, and all of them. So I'm done. And I do thank you for reconsidering it. I'm going to yield my 44 seconds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. We now have those two items before us, colleagues, items 18 and 19. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item.
Next item's item 28, called special for a card from the public, and also Councilmember Hahn called that special.
Members, this is yet another resolution that I'm asking us to support that would make sure that in the governor's infrastructure bond, as well as the Speaker and Senator Parada's competing proposals on goods movement and transportation in the State of California, that we have adequate funding for port security and environmental mitigation. And currently, you know, we have these $222 million public infrastructure proposal talking about housing, public transportation, goods movement, education, public safety. And the governor frankly has made goods movement a huge priority in his proposal, but there is something sorely missing, and that is enough money for adequate port security. And you guys have heard me give this speech a million times, and that is that America's port, which is responsible for 42% of the trade that comes into this country, is sorely lacking in security. And in my opinion, it is the most vulnerable entryway into this country. And clearly, the federal government has not put the same kind of homeland security priority on ports as it has on airports. And again, you know, it's like 1 million national jobs, one out of every 24 jobs comes from the port. When it was shut down about three years ago, it costs our national economy $2 billion a day when that port complex was shut down. So it clearly is not only the economic engine for this region, but really for the country. And in my opinion, it impacts the global economy. So I believe in trying to move goods more efficiently. I believe we got to really build up the infrastructures to make sure that we move goods more efficiently and effectively. But I'm telling you, nothing makes sense unless we can keep that port secure. So I would ask that you would support this resolution that asks for more funding in these proposals for port security. And the other area that is also sorely missing is environmental mitigation. And you've also heard me give these speeches today, and Greg gave it almost as good as I did, by talking about, you know, we can't continue to grow the Port of Los Angeles, we can't continue to widen freeways and widen bridges and have more truck trips and more car trips and not have some environmental mitigation. You know, we can't do business as usual. And in fact, unfortunately, cargo-related pollution, last year, under a CARB study, accounted for 750 premature deaths in California. It accounted for 350,000 school absences, 160,000 days of lost work just relating to cargo pollution. I think that's really something we can't put up with anymore. We didn't really know the impacts, I think, years ago, when we used to talk about growing this port and the impact of the international trade industry. Clearly, it's about good jobs, it's about providing the rest of the country with the goods that they want, but we cannot allow people to die because of it or allow our air to continually become dirtier and dirtier. So two things, these proposals need to have more port security dollars and more environmental mitigation dollars, and I hope you will support in putting that resolution so our Sacramento people can begin making sure that those are included in these massive proposals coming from Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two public speaker cards. I'd like to ask members Larry Green and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I just want to point out, if the LA Times is watching in your big, beautiful office on Spring Street, it's now 2 o'clock, 5 to 2 Friday, the party day with proclamations, and the LA City Council is still meeting. I repeat to the LA Times, it's Friday, the day of proclamations, and it's 5 to 2 in the afternoon, and he's hungry, so am I, and the LA City Council is still meeting. Now, I support item 28, and I know in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. I heard something on talk radio, it was very shocking, and it may or may not be true, it was on the Michael Savage Show, but he said that there's now, coming from my beloved President Bush in Washington, a contract to give port security of six major cities in this country to a security company from the United Arab Emirates. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but if that is true, maybe Michael Savage made it up. I'd like to know more about that, if that's true. I hope there are some American companies that could do security to the ports, and I hope that LA is not one of those six major ports. What's that? Well, you'll send Dick Cheney, just don't -- okay, no, I won't even go there. And then, and then I also want to say that this is very important, providing security to the ports. Your friend Melrose Larry has a lot of bonds. I'm not bragging, but I own a lot of bonds in the State of California, and I would certainly -- sorry? You are my next of kin. And we're both wearing the same outfit, yours a little bit more expensive. Hopefully, yours is more than $10. And I just want to say that I support that, but do look into that resource. I'm not making that up, folks. I know I work hard in my make-believe life, but I really did hear this yesterday, that there is a company from the United Arab Emirates that may be providing security to six of the major ports in this country. All right, I'll get back to you next week. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins.
As your President, Sylvia Hawkins, my decision concerning on number 28, I would like to delay it to next Tuesday. I am against taxes and insurance since we're seeing maybe over 60% is not paying taxes and insurance, whether they are officials or whether they are public people. We're seeing that taxes going to back on water, we have to pay extra taxes, back on buildings. The public people, taxpayers, have built buildings that they were not aware of. Half of California people are not paying insurance, is dealing with houses and cars. You know, dealing with areas and districts, dealing with polices, ports, travel, transportation. No one's paying half for the taxes. So I'm not with half tax. I do have a plan that I would like to share later date, maybe next week, concerning what to do with public people and all people with no tax nor insurance. I do have a plan. You will hear about it later. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. That item is now before us. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Forthwith. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those have been moved and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, March 1st, for city business that needs council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, March 8th, to leave at 11:30 for personal business that needs council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, March 22nd, to leave at 12:30 PM, and also Friday, May 19th, and Friday, July 28th, all for city business. A motion is required on the request for the 22nd.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Zine seconds.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any announcements, colleagues? Yes. Mr. Labonge?
This Monday, we're going to celebrate and honor Mayor Vera Gosa, myself, Betty White, for her great work at the Los Angeles Zoo. It's going to be a great weekend to visit the Los Angeles Zoo, Griffith Park, ride the historic battleground, or visit the Autry Natural Center, or see the new pavilion at the Travel Town Transportation Museum. Thank you, Ms. Grill, everybody. Happy President's Day weekend, and think of the great presidents.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Zine.
On a serious note, a California arbitral officer was killed this morning at a traffic stop, and this occurred on Highway 99 near Modesto. They are looking for the suspect, and that individual's in a 1990 Nissan Maxima, California plate 5 King William Adam 335, and it's on the freeway signs throughout the State of California. The officer made a traffic stop at approximately 4:40 near Modesto, and he was shot and killed. We're still trying to verify confirmation of the officer's name, but if anyone sees that 1990 Nissan Maxima 5 King William Adam 335, notify 911, and that individual hopefully will be apprehended. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of announcements. Number one, the Los Angeles Business Journal will have their annual Hall of Fame Awards Dinner, and our former mayor, Richard Reardon, will be declared the 2005 Business Person of the Year. That's February 28th, 11:00 AM. It will be at Biltmore at 506 South Grand. Also, just a reminder, DWP's African-American Association Black History event is February the 28th, 11:15, at the Department of Water and Power at 111 North Hope Street. And then Crenshaw High School will have its upcoming meeting, dealing with parent meeting. Subject will be student absenteeism, and that will be the 20th, February 23rd, at 2:00 PM, and that will be at the Crenshaw High School at 5010 11th Avenue. And then the final one is, everybody certainly should be notifying their community that March 19th is the marathon. It makes a big impact on all the communities as far as the routes and the awareness, and certainly, it's one of the most successful events we have on a one-day event, but it does create some traffic for each district.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to announce that the committee meeting, ad hoc committee on gangs and youth, will be meeting at 15 minutes after the adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Colleagues, any other announcements? Do we have any adjournment motions today? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, if I could ask everyone to please rise.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Father Fernando Arizzi, former associate pastor at St. Bridges Catholic Church. He recently died in a traffic accident in Nigeria on Monday, February the 6th. Father Fernando was born in Mexico City on May 5th, 1933, and he entered the priesthood on March 28th, 1971. He has had a variety of assignments throughout the United States, in such cities as Chicago, in addition to Los Angeles. He has also been an associate pastor locally in the Transfiguration Church in the late 80s, and also at the St. Bridges for over 12 years. He won a sabbatical in Nigeria, recently returned to Los Angeles, went back to Nigeria, and unfortunately was killed in an accident. There's going to be a memorial service for him today at St. Bridges this evening around 6 o'clock. He was actually buried in Nigeria after the accident, and that was done on February the 16th. Also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Ellen Barnes. She received a distinction at her birth as the first African, one of the first African-American triplets born in California. She was featured in local press. She and her sister, who had preceded her in death, both were teachers, counselors. She was an administrator with the Los Angeles Unified School District. Her brother Sterling is a longtime city employee with the Planning Department. She became ill about two years ago and recently passed away. She also is a cousin of Olivia Mitchell, who's deputy director for CDD in the human service area. She passed away on Friday, February the 10th. Funeral service will be held at Faith Hill Baptist Church Saturday, February 18th.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Second, Father Fernando's adjournment motion. Sorry, with Mr. Parks.
Ms. Perry, thank you. Any other adjournment motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting is now adjourned. Have a good weekend.